I'd like to call the meeting in the Prince William County School Board order. Approval of the agenda, motions in order for the approval of meeting agenda. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second, I second Mr. Jesse.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Mr. Jesse, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, appointees and employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Two, to discuss with division council and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving specific staff and students pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A7 and 8. Three, to discuss the award of a public contract to employees exclusive representative, which involves the expenditure of public funds and the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Five, to discuss and consult with division council regarding the legal requirements for school board advisory committees, including school board policies related thereto as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Six, to review disciplinary matters for specific students that would involve the disclosure of information contained in this scholastic record for individual students, and to receive legal advice regarding the same as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Seven, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. And eight, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members related to the security of school facilities, the safety of persons using such facilities, and actions taken to respond to such matters where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Williams, any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes, motion passed.
At this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session. Return to open session in one hour. The Prince William County School Board will now return to open session from closed session. Closed session certification is on for action. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of May 15, 2024 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Williams, motion passed.
Okay, great. Moving on to closed session action items. Motion is in order for appointments and releases. Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wall.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Williams, motion passed.
Okay, moving on to 10.02, motions in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that for the reason set forth in the Student Management and Alternative Program Department's SMAPD letter of April 15, 2024, Prince William County School Board approve SMAPD's recommendation to reassign student SRH24-112 to the computer-based instruction CBI program via remote access only, with educational services being determined by the student's IEP team based on charges of unlawful acts in the community.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Williams, motion passed.
Okay, moving on to 10.03. Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemption from compulsory school attendance for case number RE23-23.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Wall wins. Or Blake, I don't know, either one. Take either one, Ms. Simpson. Any discussion? Please vote. I see. All right.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
On to 10.04. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda item as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Mr. Blake.
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, that concludes our closed session action items. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have our student representative Fernando Morante with us to lead the pledge. Ms. Morante.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're moving on to our Thriving Futures Focus. Thriving Futures Focus is an opportunity to highlight the exemplary work being accomplished in our schools that fulfill our vision that every student will graduate with the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind to create a thriving future for themselves and their community. We dedicate this time during our meetings to recognizing students, staff members, and schools that have earned an honor or award at the state or national level. We appreciate how these honorees have positively represented Prince William County Public Schools, and the school board is proud to recognize them publicly for their accomplishments. Tonight, the school board will first recognize four of our schools recently recognized by the American School Counselor Association, or ASCA. The ASCA supports school counselors' efforts to help students focus on academic, career, and social-emotional development so they achieve success in school and are prepared to lead fulfilling lives as responsible members of society. ASCA provides professional development, publications, other resources, research, and advocacy to school counselors around the globe. We begin our recognition this evening with Mr. Richard Jesse, the Okaquan District, who will introduce our first award winners.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The prestigious Ramp Award shows exceptional efforts to prioritize the school's direct and indirect services to students, program planning, and improve student outcomes in the school counseling program. These schools meet or exceed best practice standards in one or more topic areas related to school excellence for student, teachers, and staff. The Okaquan District is very proud to recognize Lake Ridge Middle School as a recognized ASCA Model Program for 2024. I will now turn this program back over to Dr. Latif, and I appreciate the fact that he will introduce the students.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. Tonight, we have Director of Counseling Kristen America, Professional School Counselor Lauren Embry, and the 2024 PWCs Outstanding Principal of the Year Jim Dutrow of Lake Ridge Middle School. Principal Dutrow, would you share a few words, sir?
Sure. And thank you, Dr. Latif, school board, for having us this evening. It is my great pleasure that I stand here tonight as our counseling department is being recognized as a Ramp School. When Kristen America started at Lake Ridge Middle School four years ago, that was one of my first charges to her, was that this is an honor that we wanted to compete for and to earn. Our professional school counselors' dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence does not go unnoticed. Receiving this honor is a testament to our counselors' expertise and positive impact on our students, staff, and community. As we celebrate this achievement, we would also like to thank Ms. Ann Henry and Lisa James for their support throughout the application process, and our school counselors that are here tonight, Ms. America, Ms. Embry, and our counselors that were not able to be here tonight, I have to thank them for all of their hard work in this process. Once again, I congratulate our counseling department on receiving this recognition and look forward to continued success for our students, staff, and community. Thank you.
Congratulations, Principal Dutrow, on both your award and the school's recognition. I now invite Jennifer Wall, Representative of the Gainesville District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. On behalf of the Gainesville District, it is my pleasure to recognize Gravely Elementary School as a recognized ASCA Model Program for 2024. Gravely Elementary School is represented tonight by Principal Michael Kelklin and Counselor Megan Evers. Principal Kelklin, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Latif, and school board, for inviting us to receive this prestigious honor. I'm joined today by Megan Evers, one of our school counselors. Not able to join us tonight is Sarah Fullerton and Kim Kaiser. We are extremely proud of the work that they've done throughout numerous years. This is actually a reramp for the dedication of our entire counseling program. So I want to recognize them as a reramp school of excellence for this. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to talk with some students. I figured the best way to recognize our counselors for the award that they're getting tonight is to hear directly from the mouths of our kids. And one of the students that I talked to today wanted to share with you, Ms. Evers, and with our entire counseling program, I'd like to thank you for helping me and teaching me how to love not only myself, but how to treat myself and others. So I wanted to recognize you for the great work that you've done along with our entire counseling program. They are data-driven, they are in line with our continuous improvement plan, the strategic plan of the entire school division, and not only do they take leadership within our school, our community, for our students, our teachers, and our community members, but they also deliver leadership within Prince William County, supporting with mentorship and whatnot. So thank you for this award, and thank you for recognizing our program.
Thank you, that was wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Wall. From the Coles District Vice Chair, Ms. Lisa Zargarpur, please introduce your award-winning school.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The Coles District would like to recognize Saunders Middle School as a recognized ASCA Model Program for 2024. Saunders Middle School is represented tonight by Director of Counseling, Dr. Shannon McCombe, School Counselors Alacia Dixon, Marissa Fields, and Patrice Richardson, along with Administrative Intern Barb Babauta. Ms. Babauta, would you care to say a few words about this honor?
You did a good job there saying my last name is Zargarpur.
Listen, your first and last name get meshed together when people talk about you. She's amazing. I've known her for years because of my kids.
Thank you, you're very kind. Good evening. Let me first wish a happy belated, happy teacher appreciation to all the educators in the room. We know that the best work happens in all the classrooms in this division. I hope you have received your heart's desire of mugs, chocolates, and Starbucks coffee gift certificates. Good evening, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, and board members, and all the educators, parents, and families and guests gathered tonight. My name is Barbara Babauta, and I am representing Saunders Middle School, home of the Spartans, where every day we live our core values of accountability, compassion, community, grit, and integrity. It fills me with great pride to recognize the outstanding achievements of our counseling department, who work hand-in-hand with our teachers to support our students and our entire school community. Led by Dr. McCombe, our team is Ms. Dixon, Mrs. Fields, and Mrs. Richardson. They are committed to the academic success of every Spartan. This team holds the heart of Saunders by providing services and programming in social and emotional learning so that every student may have a thriving future for themselves and for their communities. We are extremely proud of our counseling team and grateful for their dedication, support, and commitment to our school. The Ramp designation tells the world what we already know, that at Saunders, our counseling team is amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Babauta, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. From the Brentsville District, next, Ms. Erica Tridenc, please introduce our award-winning school.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Brentsville District would like to recognize Glen Kirk Elementary School as a recognized ASCA Model Program for 2024. Glen Kirk Elementary School is represented by Principal Marissa Miranda, Assistant Principal Heather Kilgore, and School Counselors Beth Anderson and Beth Kuntstal. Ms. Miranda, would you care to share a few words?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, and school board members. I'm thrilled to be here. My name is Marissa Miranda. I'm the proud principal at Glen Kirk Elementary. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to celebrate our amazing school counselors, Beth Kuntstal and Beth Anderson, on their work in being awarded Ramp status again. Our counselors are a key part to what makes Glen Kirk an amazing place to work and learn. Their ongoing support of our continuous improvement goals, and their tireless work on evaluating their own data to improve their practices, and the support that they offer our school community are directly related to us receiving this honor for the second time. Mrs. Kilgore and I consider the Beths, as we call them, a huge reason we have continued to see such success at Glen Kirk Elementary for the seven years we have been lucky enough to be part of this community. I could not be prouder of the work they have done to receive this award and for the joy, compassion, and dedication they bring to our students every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tridenc and Ms. Miranda. Congratulations to Glen Kirk Elementary. I'd like to recognize also Ann Henry, Supervisor of Elementary Counseling, Lisa James, Mental Health Specialist, and Jane Prince, the Supervisor of Secondary Counseling, who support our schools in their efforts to pursue the Ramp designation. Let's give them a round of applause as well. It'd be remiss for me to not say how much I love our counselors, and I'm going to say that since this board, six years ago, we've increased the amount of counselors we have across the division, and I think it's been so great. We need to do more, but you guys make such a vital part of our students' lives. I remember my counselors' names from middle school and high school and college, and I wouldn't be where I am if it wasn't for my counselors, and I think about them every day, and I appreciate everything you do for our children. So at this time, I'd like to request our honorees to come forward for a photo with the school board and receive a small token of our appreciation. We will take one photo with, here we go, I'm going to, with Glen Kirk and Gravely, and a second photo with Saunders and Lake Ridge, okay? And then Diana Galata will help guide us on that. Okay, all right. Wow, fantastic. Ms. Tridenc, I believe you have one more recognition.
The Brentsville District would like to recognize Unity Reed High School's Air Force JROTC Team for their amazing three-peat as VA 265 Virginia State Drill Team Champions. At the 19th Annual Virginia State Air and Space Forces Association State Drill Championship, the Lions Drill Team secured five first-place trophies and one fourth-place trophy, earning overall first place for the third consecutive year. The state drill championship came on the heels of the team's success at the U.S. Air Force JROTC Open Drill Championships in Dayton, Ohio, where they competed in both the unarmed and armed divisions. Their hard work paid off, winning second place overall in the armed division and third place overall in the unarmed division. The team's placement in Dayton, Ohio qualified the team for a trip to Daytona Beach, Florida, where they competed against the top 24 JROTC units in the National High School Drill Team Championships. The team earned the following awards, making them placement winner and joint national champions against over 4,000 JROTC units worldwide. Fourth place unarmed inspection, fourth place unarmed regulation, fifth place armed inspection. Led by the U.S. Air Force core values of integrity first, service before self, excellence in all we do, and the motto, "One team, one fight." At this time, I invite Tech Sergeant Tina Lang and Lieutenant Colonel Daryl Robinson to introduce our outstanding champions and share a few words.
So thank you for having us again. This is a phenomenal opportunity for Colonel Robinson and myself to share our time with these amazing cadets. Our team doesn't stop practicing. It begins in August. They are there pretty much five days a week after school. They give up their birthdays, they give up their Christmases, they've given up everything just to give everything that they have to this team. They've learned to rely on each other, support each other. It doesn't matter whether it's math or history, bringing up their GPAs, supporting each other in earning two full-ride scholarships to universities, one Air Force and one Army, which is amazing because when they went out and had to do physical fitness tests or interviews, they supported each other. That's what we love about our team. It is truly one team, one fight, and it's not just necessarily about drill, it's about everything. And I couldn't be more proud of them, Colonel Robinson couldn't be more proud of them, and the team wanted to do a small little performance for you, if that's okay. So the armed team couldn't bring in their rifles, so the unarmed, if you don't mind, could they come up here in the front, right here? A small little one, and then we will end with a cheer.
Right and hut. Ready, go.
Wow, oh my gosh. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tridenc. Thank you, guys. Three years in a row is certainly impressive, and I can see why. Congratulations to the Virginia 20065 Virginia State Drill Team Champions. I'll invite the family members of these students to please stand and be recognized so we can congratulate you as well. Before taking a few pictures, Dr. McDade would like to share a few words. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, congratulations to our winning Drill Team Champions. Three times, three-time Virginia State. Make sure we put that three in there. We are PWCs proud of each and every one of you for your grit, for your discipline, for your resilience. You are simply amazing and inspiring to each and every one of us. I also want to thank Sergeant Lang and Lieutenant Colonel Robinson for your commitment and dedication to our students and to our students and for continuing to always support them and encourage them and help them live out their full talent and brilliance. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. I also do want to recognize, it's so apropos that we recognized our counselors this evening because May is National Mental Health Awareness Month, as well as Military Appreciation Month. So, it was a perfect night for the celebrations and, that we have for Thriving Futures. So, I want to congratulate gravely Glenn Kirk Elementary, Lake Ridge, and Saunders Middle Schools for their recognition, their amazing work. Our counselors simply are the best. They make, truly make a difference in the lives of our children. I know my high school counselor, I attribute my high school counselor to the reason that I'm sitting here tonight. And so, our counselors meet every student by name and by need to continue to support them, and so, we are so grateful and appreciative of our school counselors. So, congratulations to all of our awardees tonight for being recognizing for your sheer talent and amazing hard work. Congratulations, job well done.
So, I'm gonna do something a little bit different before, as you, Mr. Jesse brought up this and is a good idea, and so, I'd like each one of you to come to the mic, just say your name, and then come to the front to get in line for pictures. So, maybe we'll start over the left, just walk up to the mic, just say your name, and then come to the front, so we can recognize each one of you. Although, it's a team sport, you guys are fantastic individuals, we appreciate it.
My name is Belen Renderos. My name is Bibian Mejia.
My name is Marsha Elizy.
My name is Alejandra Lobos.
My name is Serenity Fraser.
My name is Fong Nguyen.
My name is Jocelyn Gonzalez.
My name is Dorcas Corabi.
My name is Audrey Delady.
My name is Mia Fadul.
My name is Samara Bonilla.
My name is Annie Rivera Palacios.
My name is Yidana Martinez Rivera.
My name is Hannah Setko.
My name is Ingrid Perez Ayala.
My name is Jacob Bussier.
My name is Luis Lopez.
My name is Benjamin Jensen.
My name is Conan Rodriguez.
My name is Jayden Key.
My name is Eric Diaz.
My name is Juan Zepeda.
My name is Luis Ayon.
My name is Romeo Duarte.
My name is Prince Macho.
My name is Elijah Stewart.
Thank you, let's give them another round of applause for our current state champions again. Alright, folks.
Can I, can I just, sort of back, just split the difference in between these two gentlemen here in the back? There he goes, perfect, perfect. Okay, on, we're gonna do three shots, on three. One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. Last one, one, two, and three.
Good job, people!
Very good, excellent. That was incredible. Thank you, Dr. McDade. Where are we now? Oh yeah, this time, okay, we did that. Okay, we are now moving on to, you know, one of the great things about our school board is that we have a student representative. We have two student representatives and alternate. Tonight, we have Fernando Morante on the dais with us, we have Isabel Alversano over here as well, and Jacqueline Garcia, who's been our alternate for the year, and all three of them have contributed significantly to the school division, to our understanding of what the students are going through, and have represented and advocated for the students well. So, tonight, we'll take this moment to read a resolution that the board would like to vote on for each of these members of our board, and I'll take that moment to read the resolution. The resolution states, whereas, so I actually make, I'm gonna make the motion to accept this resolution, whereas, that our student representatives have served with great distinction and unwavering dedication to the Prince William County Public School Board, and whereas their leadership and advocacy have faithfully reflected the concerns and aspirations of their fellow students, significantly enhancing the board's responsiveness to the educational needs of the student body, and whereas, they have demonstrated exceptional leadership skills and a deep commitment to promoting academic excellence and extracurricular engagement to their high schools, and whereas, their collaborative efforts with the school admini, with school administrators have greatly contributed to a positive and inclusive educational environment benefiting the entire school community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County Public School Board hereby expresses its sincere gratitude and commendation to our student representatives for their outstanding service and profound impact on the Prince William County Public School community. Be it further resolved that this resolution be documented in the official minutes of the Prince William County School Board, and that a copy be presented to each student representative in acknowledgement of their valuable contributions and dedication. Do I have a second? Ms. Zargarpour?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. I second.
Okay, Ms. Zargarpour, seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is an honor every year when we get to this part of the calendar year to recognize and honor our student representatives. I want to take a second out to acknowledge Ms. Jesse, our former Akwan District School Board Representative. It was Ms. Jesse and myself who attended NSBA and VSBA events and said, "Why don't we have those here in Prince William?" And it has really, truly been, for me, a dream come true every year, because with each year, the representatives that we are honored to have served with us just continue to get better and better and to truly change and transform our division with student voice, which for me is a dream come true. Having been a student and understanding what it means to be a part of a system that you don't get to really fully participate in, to watch all of you, year after year, continue to improve our division, to bring credible voice and meaningful voice from the students to all of us adults who are the policymakers, is just more than I have vocabulary to express in its meaning and essence. And I could never be prouder than the three young ladies who are the three women who served with us this year. Each of you brought your own uniqueness to the board, reminded us often that sometimes we are the hindrance to your success in the most professional and spicy-sometimes way as possible, and showed your personalities. I am just thrilled and honored to have been able to work with each one of you, and I wish you all the best of success in the future, and I will echo what I echo every year. Please come back, share with us how your education has impacted your future, give us a look back on what it is that you've learned and how it's been beneficial to you as you move on, and continue to stay in contact with us so that we can, you have, continue to show an example to your fellow students coming through the pipeline, what can be accomplished. And I am just exceptionally proud too, that, of course, no bias towards males, but I am always excited to see women in leadership, and especially women of color, and that was all three of you this year. So, I wish you the best of luck, and thank you so much for your service and leadership.
Mr. Jesse?
I also want to thank the three of you for all that you've done, and I also want to encourage you that as you go into college, take the opportunity to become active and leaders at your college. I think you have the potent, I know you have the potential, and I think it would do you well, and I look forward to hearing a lot of good things from you in the future, and perhaps even one day come back and be on the school board.
Ms., who, someone else? Nope, okay. Ms. Wall?
It's always a pleasure to have a new member come to our board, a student representative each time that we have had a changeover, and every person has been unique, and it's been wonderful to serve with you. And, Morante, and I wish you all the best, and thank you so much for all of your contributions and your words. We've listened, we've really appreciated your perspective, and I know, we know that you seek to gain the perspective of others and then articulate it here, and so, that's been really wonderful to see you in action. Thank you so much, and we wish you the best.
Okay, what I would say, that I would just wrap up by saying this board will consider you a friend and colleague forever, and if you need anything, please don't hesitate to call and ask. We really, truly appreciate your commitment to the school, and I echo Mr. Jesse's comments. I know you'll go out and become terrific leaders, and all of our members in the past have, and I've kind of followed many of them, and they've done terrific, so I, I know you all will as well. Please read the vote, Ms. Simpson.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, let's take a picture with our representatives and then, oh, and actually, let me, before I do that, before I do that, I know we have Fernando's parents here, can you please stand, Mr. or Mrs. Morante, thank you. None of our students can be anywhere without their parents or guardians, and we can't thank you enough for everything you've done for her and for us. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Well, as we get to the end of the year, we have so many other things and so many things to celebrate, it is really fantastic. So, moving on now to the adoption of the consent agenda, Ms. Zargarpour?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote, yeah.
I just want to thank my appointee to the Advisory Council on Equity, Dr. Benson Cook. I appreciate his service and willingness to be a part of the council, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Great. Next, we have acknowledgements and recognitions, and tonight, we have a special guest, so are we, we're voting on that first, right? Okay, yeah, okay. Emotions is order, Ms. Zargarpour.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the acknowledgements and recognitions as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
Since I will not be here for the first June meeting, because the promotion ceremony is the same night for my son, I would like to thank this board, and again, Casa Bumar and former board member, Adelle Jackson. This is the fourth year that we, as a division, will be honoring LGDQ+ Pride Month. It's an important acknowledgement for not only our students, but also our staff members within the division, and I just appreciate the continued acknowledgement for those individuals, both staff and students, and thank you to the board for continuing to approve this now for the fourth year in a row. Thank you.
Please vote.
Vote is six yes, two abstain. Tradenic, Wall, motion passed.
Going out of order, so that, so that was 1402. Alright, so, so I was kind of right. Alright, we're gonna go back to, so, we have a special guest with us here tonight, and it's not often, actually, it's never happened in my six years on the school board. We are pleased to have Dr. Cardell Patillo, the, Patillo, I'm sorry, and the Virginia School Board's Association President, joining us to address the school board. Dr. Patillo, you are welcome to have the floor.
I want to start by saying I'm blown away. You all have some amazing students and staff, and it's a tribute to your dedication as board members and the hard work of your superintendent and her staff as well, so you all should really be excited about what you are, what you're producing here in Prince William County. To Chair, Dr. Latif, Vice Chair, Zargarpour, excuse me, I'm sorry for that, I want to thank you all for having me here, and I want to first thank your board clerk, Ms. Simpson, and your deputy clerk for the hospitality and inviting me here on this evening as well. I'm honored to stand before you as the Virginia School Board Association President and fellow board member of the Portsmouth City School Division. On behalf of the entire VSBA Board of Directors, I bring you warm greetings tonight. I want to express our deep appreciation for your dedication to the education and well-being of the children within Prince William County Public Schools and the broader Commonwealth of Virginia. Your tireless efforts do not go unnoticed, and your commitment to fostering a nurturing educational environment for all students is truly commendable. Today actually marks my 13th stop on my president's roadshow around the Commonwealth, and I couldn't be more pleased to continue this journey with you. Your role as advocates for the children in your community is both vital and challenging, and I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the countless hours you dedicate to shaping the future of our youth. I personally understand that the responsibilities of being a school board member can at times seem tiring and thankless. However, please know that your efforts are making a significant impact on the lives of students that you serve. Your commitment to education is building the foundation for a brighter future for the children of Prince William County and the entire Commonwealth. So, once again, thank you for your unwavering dedication. I look forward to our continuing work together to ensure a brighter future for Virginia's students. Thank you.
Doc, hold on, Dr. Patillo, it's not every day we get to have someone from Portsmouth come up and observe our meeting and join us and address the board. We want to thank you for representing us in Richmond and for taking our concerns to both- you for representing us in Richmond and for taking our concerns to both the legislature and to the governor's office and helping advocate on the behalf of Prince William County students, Prince William County families and schools. If you don't mind, we're going to take one last picture because Dr. McDade demanded it. No, no, I'm just joking. We're going to do one more picture with you up here.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we are moving into citizen comment time. Those citizens who've signed up in advance where the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. Citizen comment period is for regular school board meetings is one hour, and citizens may speak on agenda items or topics germane to the operations and policies of PWCS. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you'll be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not do so, the board will recess, and I'll ask the room to be cleared to restore public order. Tonight, we have 13 citizens sign up to speak. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And I will now move to the speaker list. Give me one sec. Anybody have one? Oh, I got it. I'll call the first five up if you want to grab a seat in the front. Magali Hurtado, Anam Mahmood, Allison Egbert, Ali Al Hadad, Julia Cali. Start with Magali Hurtado.
Good evening. I'm Magali Hurtado. My address is on file. I'm an Okaquan District resident, mom of two PWCS students, and proud friend of many educators. I commend the superintendent's initiative to reduce exclusionary discipline, but I think we got it all wrong. The idea should not be to reduce exclusionary discipline. It should be to reduce the instances that result in exclusionary discipline, instead of just sweeping them under the rug to say that we reduced it. Last week, Mr. Willk asked, or last time, Mr. Willk asked, how many disruptions are enough? Please tell us. How many times does a student get to yell, threaten, intimidate, hit, terrorize classmates, insult teachers and administrators before actual consequences are imparted? Everyone is tired of hearing that it is a process. Guess what? A process that takes an entire school year is not a process. It's just running out the clock. Ms. Williams mentioned that to her, having a firm number sounds like three strikes and you're out. Valid. But how about we make the consequence for the first strike a meaningful one, so we don't end up with a second one? To permit is to promote. And in my opinion, the current code of behavior, the lack of actual enforcement, the district leadership's constant undermining of teachers and school administrators is actually promoting the very behaviors you seek to avoid. But yay, the PowerPoint says the exclusionary discipline was reduced. School board members, please, your constituents expect you to have actual input on these policies to reflect your community concerns. We need you acting on what you're hearing from your community, not on the glossy presentations that you see on this room. In Prince William County, there are five categories of behaviors and responses. Thardiness is a level one or level two, which are the less severe. Possession or use of drugs and alcohol are a level one or level two, maybe a level four. It can also be a three. We need consistency. How is assault and battery or striking stuff also a level one? How many times does a student need to hit someone for us to make it a level five? Thank you.
Thank you. Anam Mahmood.
Good evening. My name is Anam Mahmood, and my address is on file. Other Prince William County students, along with myself, wanted to talk with the school board to resolve an issue we are passionate about. So today, I will be discussing the proposal of shortening the school day. As students age and grow intellectually, their classes become more challenging, and some students prefer the rigor of advanced courses to prepare themselves for college. Some have extracurricular activities such as clubs or sports. A few even dive into community service or enter the workforce through a part-time job to make ends meet, not to mention their personal struggles and mental health. The case is that every student's life is different, but they all share the responsibilities to face, which takes a toll on adolescent physical and mental health. A simple change in their schedules could have a huge impact on their lives. This is why my peers and I have come up with two solutions to shorten the school day. One proposal is to start school 40 minutes later. Although a small, although a small change, this new schedule will yield more time for students to prepare for school, travel to school, or even get more sleep. If not preferred, a second solution is ending school an hour earlier. Implementation of this schedule will allow students more time to prepare for external responsibilities, such as work or taking care of siblings. It will also allow students to have more time for extracurricular activities, such as clubs or after-school tutoring. Additionally, students who commute will not have to sit through traffic, especially during rush hour, which is typically between 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. We all know how bad traffic can get during, how bad traffic can be on Route 1 and 95. After thorough research, both our proposals comply with Virginia state laws, which require at least 990 hours of instruction. The current traditional schedule fails to consider the diverse needs and responsibilities of many students. Longer school hours have proven to not equate to increased productivity. We should be focusing on the quality of educational instruction, not just the quantity of hours. By prioritizing the work-life balance of our students, we can cultivate a more supportive and efficient learning environment that empowers students to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. It can even help decrease the rate of chronic absenteeism in Prince William County schools. It is time for us to recognize the importance of adapting our educational practices to better serve the needs of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Allison Egbert.
Hello, everyone. My name is Allison Egbert. My address is on file with the county. I am a human resources manager for a DOD contractor here in northern Virginia. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak here, as prior to this evening, my concerns about bullying were largely ignored by my son's elementary school. I stand before you as a concerned parent of a student here in Prince William County. Two years ago, I made the decision to move to Prince William from Loudoun County. I'm sure you have seen them all in the news. Where my student completed two years of his schooling, I decided to move to Prince William because of the value each of you place on students' education. In a recent board meeting, I heard a representative mention Prince William County is working on managed behavior through partnership with families. Unfortunately, in my circumstances, I do not believe this to be the case. Everyone has different beliefs and conceptions of what's appropriate or what is not. How do we, meaning Prince William County, decipher a racial slur as being used between friends and/or hate statement? Who is voting on whether it is friendly or hateful? The board is supposed to provide clear and concrete guidelines on what is and what is not acceptable. It makes sense that when my nine-year-old biracial son was called the N-word four times on the bus, no one helped him. No one protected him. After four emails to the principal and a discussion with the counselor, I was brushed off. I cannot help but think I was brushed off due to my physical appearance, not fitting your, in quotes, "protected group" qualifications as outlined within the definition of bullying in the Code of Behavior document. My nine-year-old son provided names, tangible examples, specific instances of harassment, and he even articulated how uncomfortable he was riding the bus, yet no one from the administration helped. It wasn't until my fifth email attempt, when I copied a Prince William County school board member on an email, that a meeting was scheduled. I would say that reaching out four times as a parent is classified as repeated and not ordinary. Wouldn't each of you agree? If you can implement a code of conduct, you can update the document as many times as you wish, but the issues of bullying remain. The bully calling my son the N-word has the privilege of riding the bus, yet my son is terrified to step foot on that bus for the fear of what he will be called next. This is what you as a board consider low-level? This is what you as a board consider discipline? The victim being punished and not the perpetrator? Thank you.
Ali Al Hadad.
Before I get started, I'd like to have this passed out to members of the chair. While that is being passed out. Good afternoon, members of the school board. I am Ali Al Hadad, and I attend Potomac Senior High School for my senior year. Because I'm in my last year of primary education, I've decided to bring up a topic that has been glaring me in the eyes ever since I began high school. That issue is the morning class start times and the current schedule. Perhaps one of the most pressing issues exacerbated by rigid school schedules is the epidemic of sleep deprivation among teenagers. Scientific research overwhelmingly supports the fact that adolescence requires sufficient sleep for optimal cognitive function and overall well-being, especially considering that in adolescence, the brain and body are still under development and changes are constant in them. Change is already difficult to deal with as adults. It is rampant and fast in teenagers. The early start times of many schools contradict the natural sleep patterns of teenagers, leading to a myriad of detrimental effects on academic performance and health. The relentless cycle of late-night studying, compounded by extracurricular activities and part-time employment, imposes an immense burden on students' mental and physical health. Chronic sleep deprivation, coupled with the stress of academic and extracurricular demands, contributes to a pervasive culture of burnout and exhaustion among students. Considering these challenges, it is crucial for educational institutions to reassess and adapt their scheduling practices to better accommodate the diverse cases of student lives, implementing more flexible scheduling options such as later start times or hybrid learning. The point being to negate the detrimental effects of sleep deprivation and alleviate the strain on students juggling multiple responsibilities. In a study done in December of 2021, it was found that 80% of students had at least one extracurricular activity, and 30% had an after-school job. Therefore, it's very difficult for teenagers to fall asleep before 11:00 p.m., and because of school start times, 2/3 of the students don't get the recommended eight hours of sleep. With the struggle of achieving a healthy amount of sleep and thrust it into classes first thing in the morning, students struggle with maintaining alertness and learning new things in the classroom environment. My proposal is to have flex in the morning rather than have a class before it. In conjunction, to have a greater grace period before the actual start time of classes. This provides home room for students to get themselves situated for the rest of the day and receive any important announcements that may pertain to themselves. Finally, I've made each class a length of 85 minutes rather than 90. The effect may seem minimal, but in truth, most, if not all, classes finish what needs to be done in a single class in 85 minutes anyways. I've created a schedule that may not be able to offer students more sleep, but could offer students a better chance of being more prepared for their classes in the morning. This is why our proposal is worthy of consideration. I've come to the Board of Education to ask for any opinions or thoughts and potential detriments or obstacles that could prevent us from achieving a more prepared and well-rested generation of youth. With all due respect, the schedule isn't helping anyone. It's only killing us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julia Cali.
Hello. My name is Julia Cali. My address is 12942 Pintail Road. Hello. My name is Julia Cali, and I am the co-president of the Woodbridge Senior High School NAMI on-Campus Club. My co-president, Alexa McMillan, would be here tonight. However, she is competing with our softball team at the district tournament tonight. Go Vikings. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and we are the first high school NAMI club in the state of Virginia. Pat Victorston from NAMI Prince William, who helped us start our NAMI club, has gone on to help Forest Park High School in creating their NAMI club this year. Our priority with NAMI on-campus is to cultivate a supportive environment for student mental health, share information on school and community resources, and stop the stigma surrounding mental health. This year, we ran a wellness walk and community resource fair and partnered with the national clothing brand, No Solo, a company focused on raising mental health awareness and reminding people that nobody goes solo in their mental health struggles. We partnered with our school's theater department during their production of Romeo and Juliet, hosting a resource table with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. We hosted mental health awareness nights at some of our sporting events, drawing attention to the mental health struggles that many student athletes face. And we are incredibly grateful to our own Okaquan District Representative, Mr. Jesse, for attending our mental health awareness event at the girls' basketball game and supporting our events, our efforts in raising mental health awareness. In addition to the girls' basketball game, we hosted mental health awareness events with our varsity baseball, JV and varsity softball, and JV and varsity girls' lacrosse teams. At these events, we gave our students, athletes, and the athletes from the opposing teams, goodie bags similar to what we have for you tonight, containing mental health resources and our No Solo socks from Woodbridge, with Woodbridge colors. We are so grateful to Mr. Jack, our athletic director, who has joined us in promoting mental health awareness among our student athletes by purchasing custom No Solo socks in Woodbridge colors. We hosted mental health awareness tables, ran a fuzzy sock drive, and read books about managing your feelings to students at Okaquan Elementary School. Our most recent event was hosting the Ending the Silence presentation given by NAMI Prince William to educate adolescents about the warning signs of mental health conditions and what steps to take if you or a loved one are experiencing a mental health concern. As I'm graduating on the 30th, I hope to utilize my experiences this year and participate in the NAMI on-Campus Club at James Madison University. While I will not be here next year, our club has plans to host another wellness walk and resource fair and have more mental health awareness events for our whole community. We'd like to thank our principal, Ms. Abney, and our club sponsors for their support in our first year. We'd like to thank the school board and Dr. McDade for encouraging mental health awareness and resources in the school system. And we'd like to close by giving each of you a mental health awareness bag for Mental Health Awareness Month. They contain a bunch of fun stuff for you guys, like pamphlets, NAMI information, and a mental health language bookmark. We also provided stress balls and com strips for you guys to support your own mental health. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Next five will be Marty Weaver, Bill Garber, Yanet Elias, Cattalea Claros, and Che Claros. Marty Weaver.
Marty Weaver, Okaquan. Some of you had great questions last time. What I heard in response was wah, wah, wah. Listening to the feel-good garbage heard here, I don't know how previous generations survived and thrived. All current generations have experienced the pandemic because of mismanagement by experts in medicine and education. Now we hear from the central office with its think tank of PhDs. They propose a new code of behavior, but as really as suggestions of behavior, as every school, every teacher, every student can be treated differently. So basically, 90,000-plus students with IEPs. It's just that they don't realize that yet, or maybe they do. You don't really want to pin anything down, neither the infractions nor the consequences, because it all depends on the person, on the day, on the events, on, you know, the whatever. Why must you all keep reinventing the wheel with one failed idea after another? We had inventive spelling. Now we have teachers who can't spell. Open classroom phase, no walls, doors. A teacher told me it was fire code. Then walls and doors were added years later. Kids can't read, write, do math, but someone believes they can do critical thinking. I have been here several years. I have heard numerous teachers, bus drivers, students, parents, talk about folks being physically and verbally assaulted, scratched, hit, punched, kicked, choked, spat on. But good news. Millions of dollars are spent so people might not be shot or stabbed. You want to talk everything to death or spend money. You don't need more money or more PhDs. You need more common sense. You don't need more coddling of truant students, those that just aren't into it. It is called consequences. Common sense parents would not accept this stupidity, but you with the advanced degrees have to conduct surveys, pilot programs, to justify your existences. No need for some idiotic study about cell phones in classrooms. Grow a spine, or at least pretend you have one, like you think you can pretend so much else. Phone's gone in the fall, at least turned off and left with teacher, period. Phones gone in the fall, at least turned off and left with teacher, period. No more cheating with them, no more bullying with them, no more distractions from them. And in-school suspensions? Definitely yes. But there is no need for extra staff. Take a cue from Bob Dylan's Alice's Restaurant. Put in a Group W bench in the main office, counselor's office, nurse's office, wherever else. If you have more kids than that, well then, what can I say? You are utter failures. And if someone raises a hand as an aggressor, not self-defense, they are gone. Learn now rather than later on the street. Rethink that MOU before there is a parkland here. Each generation has stress, depression, starvation, crippling diseases like polio, World War, Cold War with duck and cover drills, you know, nuclear annihilation. So stop with the pity party for the latest generation.
Bill Garber.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Bill Garber. I live at 15913 Edgewood Drive in Dumfries. My family has students at all levels of Prince William County schools, and I'm here to express my deep concern about alarming student behavior. I understand the code of behavior is under discussion and review. I applaud Board Representative Wilk for his calling out concerns over the code and our current approach. Just within the past month, I've personally witnessed cyberbullying involving racial slurs, targeting an individual elementary school student. I have heard of student-on-student assaults occurring throughout the system and teachers being verbally and physically assaulted. It seems that it is now commonplace for students to display inappropriate, unacceptable, and downright disturbing behaviors. Additionally, cellphone use is a constant classroom distraction, and it causes much conflict between teachers and students at all levels of the system. Enforcing the code of behavior is a combined responsibility involving administrators, parents, and guardians, but also our community. It appears to outside observers like myself that we have an enforcement problem. The code is either being enforced on an inconsistent basis or is not being taken seriously by students and families, and has consequences that are not taken seriously by students. Abhorrent student behavior has become a systemic problem, and it requires an aggressive and system-wide solution. More reports and teacher trainings are not the answer. We should explore aggressive enforcement of the code, more accountability placed on parents and guardians for problematic student behavior. Detentions, Saturday school, and other consequences are often looked at as a complete joke by students. Enforceable and appropriate consequences need to be more squarely placed on the table. There is an elephant in the room. Parents and guardians need to be held accountable for the actions of their children. We are way too quick to blame schools, teachers, and administrators and give parents and guardians a pass. Additionally, consequences for the code of behavior violations need to be transparently reported to teachers, school staff, parents, and guardians involved in the incidents as far as the privacy laws will allow. As I look at this endemic issue, it really requires very serious, dedicated, and specific review. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board on this difficult but important matter.
Thank you. Yanet Elias.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Yanni Elias, and I'm a senior at Potomac Senior High School. As a part of our AP Government Class end-of-year project, Bezawi and I have been assigned to identify and propose solutions that focus on issues within our community.
My name is Bezai Tabata. I'm a junior at Potomac Senior High School. Today, we would like to draw your attention to a crucial matter, the welfare of our students, staff, and their families.
Specifically, we want to address the issue of Code Orange Days. There are no compelling need for Code Orange Days when there are two-hour delays that adequately serve the same purpose.
This year, we have experienced an extraordinary phenomenon. We do not need the need to use Code Orange Days, not one.
In the beginning of the semester, we could have used one Code Orange Day, but instead, the school board decided to use a two-hour delay, which did not make any sense.
As the school board committee, you should be concerned about the well-being of your students, staff, and the families of Prince William County.
The fact alone should make us pause and consider the necessity of such measures in the first place.
Code Orange Days require live virtual learning, which during the pandemic proved to be an absolute disaster. It was incredibly challenging for both students and teachers to plan these sessions effectively.
Let us not forget the parents, many of whom who are juggling multiple tasks, including their jobs, who are also trying to take care and support their children's education. For parents who have children with special needs, the challenges are even more pronounced.
According to PWCS website, we have eighteen days, about two-and-a-half weeks, of building hours. This implies that nothing is stopping us from declaring Code Red Days, just like we did this year. So again, why do we even have Code Orange Days?
Virtual learning does not maximize time for instruction. Analysis of student test scores have repeatedly shown severe declines in academic achievement due to virtual learning.
Teachers and parents cannot prepare when Code Orange Days are called the night before. They put so much stress in teachers and parents and increase students' absence.
According to Prince William Times, our very own Potomac District Representative said he was surprised by the Code Orange changes and said he does not agree with the requirement for live teacher instruction, saying it is not possible for all students and poses undue burdens on teachers.
It's time to reconsider Code Orange Days and get rid of them before the next school year, and then let's create an alternative solution that benefits all in PWCS.
By doing so, we can prioritize the well-being and education of our students in Prince William County and the staff while minimizing disruption to the academic calendar. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Katilea Claros.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Katilea Claros, and my address is on file. I'm here to talk about middle school recess. Earlier this May, my committee spoke to the superintendents of middle school. They said they wanted to break up the recess period into three five-minute brain breaks, but this is not what we have been advocating for. They said it would be tricky to find time for a recess period, but if you can have a three, five-minute break periods, that means there could be one fifteen-minute break period in the day. The superintendent said that they would discuss our cause with all the middle school principals on May eighth. We are patiently awaiting for a follow-up for this meeting. At a previous school board meeting, the Associate Superintendent of Student Services and Postgraduate Success stated that the main issues chronic absenteeism were anxiety, mental health, and lack of social connectedness. It sounds like a recess period for students is a solution, because if you have a recess period where kids can socially connect, they will be more likely to want to come to school. This is a result in more thriving futures. We ask, when will the committee learn the outcome of our submitted proposal? I will be a middle schooler in less than twenty days and have been on this journey for the last two school years. I would love to start sixth grade with the opportunity to catch up with friends at recess. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chee Claros.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and school board members. My name is Chee Claros, and my address is on file. I'm a third grader at Cowboys Elementary School. I'm here to advocate again for middle school recess. The Middle School Recess Committee has spoken here several times about the benefits of recess. Here's a reminder, recess helps kids do better on tests and improve social and emotional skills and reduces disruptive behavior. When I do not have recess, I have a lot of energy and I cannot pay attention without it. Middle schoolers do not have recess, and I think they should have time to play and be kids. Teachers also will need benefits from a fifteen-minute recess break. That is why our middle school community deserves a fifteen-minute recess period. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next three will be Barbara Tate, Sabah Barkna, Hugh John Donnelly. Barbara Tate.
Hi, my name is Barbara Tate, and my address is on file. There are more than fifteen middle schools in Prince William County. This means that there are fifteen different scenarios that can happen, all in the same way, but get fifteen different answers. That means that what happens at one school isn't happening at the school two miles away. I urge the school board to look further into changes in the code of behavior to give clear guidance to administrators. There is entirely too much ambiguity and too much discretion. Here are just a few examples of why this isn't working. While there is a little bit more information on bullying in the proposed code of behavior, what about the students that don't communicate verbally, like maybe you and I do? What about the students that can't go home to tell their parents, hey, I was bullied today at school? Because they can't say more than ten words. How are they going to fill out this form that you guys would like them to fill out? What about the kids that don't have a good memory, that just simply can't remember the student's name and all of these descriptions that they are needed to input into this form? What if they don't have a good home life? Nobody that they can count on to fill out this form. A few weeks ago, my son was in PE class and saw another student being bullied. The child has autism and did not communicate verbally with more than a few words. My son went to the children bullying this child on his own and let them know that this child is now on my son's team for PE and that they were now going to be friends with this child and that bullying was not going to continue here. My son was commended by the school and, quote, "There should be more kids like you," which is great. I'm glad my son is a kind person, but where are the adults? Where are there any implications for these children that clearly were bullying this? By the way, this was a report from the teacher, not my son. My son actually never even mentioned this incident to me. In November, again, this is a teacher's wording, not my son's, there was a stampede at this school during lunch because the cafeteria didn't open on time. There were too many kids to sort out the code of behavior that were in violation. So the only thing that happened is our family incurred more than $2,500 in medical expenses because my son needed emergency medical treatment. Two days ago, there was a fight on school grounds that took place where a child hit another child so poorly that his eyeball popped out a socket and EMS came to get him from the school. By the current code of behavior, it looks like he's going to get a cool four-day vacation at home, probably playing Xbox. So why aren't we doing more? What is the solution? It's not working. The kids are still doing this, and insanity is doing the same thing and continuing to expect different results. Thank you.
Sabah Barkna. Hugh John Donnelly.
My name and address is on record. I have a student here at Prince William County School System, and next to my wife, he's the most important person in my life. I started to pay attention to what's going on in schools through my wife and her involvement with the school board over the past couple of years. I personally have been on the conservative side, but have been very open to progressive ideas that make sense to me. But over the past several years, I've noticed that most of the emphasis in the schools have been on DEI, restorative practices, and SLL test scores for accreditation. I'm no expert in any of these areas. I'm a layman with my opinion based on limited research, but I grew up in a time where merit-based systems was the pinnacle of achievement. There were winners and losers, and not everyone got a trophy. We are all Americans, and we are equal regardless of race, ethnicity, age, gender, religion, sexual orientation, or political ideology. So I really don't understand DEI. It doesn't make sense to me because I thought it was all covered in the Constitution. After reviewing the students' grades at the last meeting, I don't understand Prince William County's excitement in the overall SOL scores. They included scores from seventy-five to sixty-six percent. To me, that's a C and D score that the school board thinks is a great achievement. It seems to be that equity trumps achievement. Which brings me to the last emerging technology, I mean, emerging ideology being implemented in our schools today, restorative practice. Even though one of our core values of any democracy is the rule of law, we are implementing an emerging science that treats discipline as an instructional, prevention-based, to ensure equity and fairness. Although you can find many studies showing improvement in the levels of recidivism, you can find as many studies and case studies that show no improvement as well. Why is that? Some people say it's too arbitrary, takes too long to implement. The onus again is on the teachers. They have to document these issues over and over and respond to them later and initiate action to formulate an equitable solution. In more serious cases, it involves specialized support counselors, psychologists, social workers, parents, and in some cases, even the victim. To my understanding, some of these processes are voluntary. To me, that is the definition of arbitrary. Even the experts all agree if a program isn't implemented properly, it is doomed to failure. It is also well-accepted that five to ten percent of the students, regardless of the disciplinary program, don't care about accountability. Students need structure and accountability in their lives.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Okay. That concludes Citizen Common Time, and we are now moving on to 1601, the Office of Associate Superintendent for Student Services and Post-Secondary Success on the Code of Behavior, which is on for action. Do I have a motion for this? Got it. Okay. So I guess we can just, isn't that part of discussion? All right. Well, let's just go ahead. We'll do the presentation. Dr. McDade.
So Ms. Heavner is going to present to you some red line changes that were made to the code of behavior based on feedback from the last meeting, and she won't go through the entire code of behavior as we did last time, only the edits.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Dr. Latif, Vice Chair of Zargarpur, members of the school board. I will just hit very briefly some of the edits that were made, just based on feedback. So if you'll recall, it's the last time we overviewed the code of behavior's purpose, and the code of behavior serves as a framework for behavior expectations, clear expectations, and it outlines possible consequences for violations. It also creates a shared understanding of what are violations. Additionally, it fosters a supportive environment and preventative practices that are outlined, which really does not replace consequences, but they are strategies for prevention. So the updates that we reviewed previously on May first were edits for organization readability, enhanced information definitions, and we incorporated updates from the General Assembly. You all should have received a red line document that's shown on the screen. You can see the yellow highlighted red text are edits and additions based on feedback. You also have a chart of changes, which the red sections reflect the additions. The old language is on the left. Those are all available online for constituents who would like to view those. So in the current proposed revisions, we have replaced, removed the chart, the summary chart that was in question, and embedded responses as outlined in the Virginia Department of Education model policies, so the leveled responses are reflective of what the state recommends. We've also added further clarification about the leveled responses to include responses for Level Four and Level Five violations. In relation to bullying, we've added information to further clarify the definition of bullying. As far as cell phones, there are no changes at this time from the May first proposed revisions. The code of behavior, we've removed the subjective language, and as far as restorative practices, we've added language to emphasize that restorative practices do not replace consequences. That assessment language was also added to clarify threats that may result in sanctions under the code of behavior. Threat assessment language was also added to clarify threats that may result in sanctions under the code of behavior. So as you'll see on the slide, the proposed 2425 code of behavior has been updated to follow the 21, the 2021 Model Guidance for Positive Preventive Code of Behavior, Student Conduct Policy and Alternative Suspension. This is the state guide from which we base our decisions on. Those decisions outline possible responses. You as a school board do have policies that are consistent with this. You also have the ability to impose more stringent guidelines. So again, revisiting that we do have under consideration by our governor, a new definition of bullying. We are waiting for the outcome of this. If that is signed, this will be the adopted information. And as far as the ordinary teasing, horse pay, horse play and, I'm sorry, I'm having a charge. Argument or peer conflict, we did add the language in the FAQs. You can see that on the page 56 of the proposed, which gives you an outline of what ordinary may fall into. Thank you.
Do we want to have a discussion first? Do you want, okay, so the moat, I'll make the motion then? I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the proposed 2425 code of behavior? Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair?
Oh, Ms. Williams, seconds, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question for Ms. Hubner.
Mr. Dennett.
Do the tiers still exist within the code of behavior? There's still the tiers?
We do reference tiers. So tiers have responses also aligned with them. So we've clarified in removing the tier above, if you look on the leveled responses, tiers are really referred to in the MTSS process, the multi-tiered systems of support, levels one, two, and three, and they do align with leveled responses. So I know that's a little bit complicated, but you can see on page, the revised page 34, where it talks about responding to student behavior, we've clarified using levels, which is the same language that aligns with the model policies from the state. Previously in the document, we refer to tiers as related to intervention.
Thank you. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Ms. Hubner. Well, I guess I'll make my closing argument in my statement here. First, thank you to three constituents from the Potomac District who came out and spoke tonight. Full transparency, any parent who had been expressing bullying issues to me. Even recently, I've encouraged them to say, "Come out, express your concerns to the board." So I'm happy a couple of parents did come out tonight and speak before the board about some of the concerns that I've been hearing throughout the course of the entirety of this year. Giving credit where credit is due, I do appreciate the incorporation of some of my feedback into the code of behavior. Adding the statement of the threat assessment is palpable. And, and I think it's important that it's stated in there, again, as we've done, that the threat assessment does not necessarily negate that a consequence will be given. There isn't a, we've expounded on bullying, more definitions, key things going into more detail. We've added some state code, I appreciate that. When I asked for like a statement of affirmation, and, and I do believe, looking at the document, it was nice because it was juxtaposed, and so anyone who can see that document on board docs, you can kind of see side by side what the first presentation did and what the second one does with red lines. So we've done that. But I will be voting no tonight, and here's why. And my no vote is not saying I don't believe in a code of behavior. My no vote is saying I don't support the current form that's being presented tonight. So, I'll start with the first one. I think we're missing a extraordinary opportunity. I firmly support and advocate for in-school suspension. It is offered in the code of behavior, but it's left to site-based management. There is no formal address or statement that it will be a disciplinary measure outlined in every building. So as one parent said, who spoke earlier about over 15 middle schools, what one building could have and then another building two miles down the road and what they offer are not consistent. And I, whether, I understand resources, as Ms. Zargarpur mentioned two weeks ago about that, I understand we have some additional funds from the BOCs, but we don't even have to do one in every elementary necessarily. I'd like to see how it would go potentially in every high school. Does it lead to a deterrence in disciplinary matters? And I think that would be very important. I, I also look at it, I don't even want to get into standards-based grading, but if a student is in that room being forced to do their NHIs, that serves two purposes. We're going to pass the kids, you're stuck in a room all day, isolated from your peers, and you're doing work that your teachers have provided for you. So, in summary with that, I strongly support in-school suspension because it, we, we've talked about this exclusionary discipline, it eliminates that in most regards. It almost offers, in my opinion, a buffer zone between what might be a level one, more minor, which I look at those, to between a level two, which is a one to three-day OSS. I, I think ISS could be the right form, and I do believe there should be some exclusions and some discretion left in some cases to the principal. For example, if a student thrives and says, "Send me home, five days", I think a parent mentioned play on my Xbox, right? Mine's out of date, I need Xbox One. But anyways, stay on your Xbox for five days. Maybe the parent comes and says, "I think my son or daughter would be better served in five days of ISS." Okay, that's something that could be worked on, given kind of the list of things or options under the disciplinary action of the levels, which I think is great in that regard. So, in summary with that, I think we're missing an opportunity of in-school suspension across the board. I want to go into an area of disruption. This kind of goes with my theme of where we navigate from a level one to a level two. And I understand that we don't want to necessarily do, as Ms. Williams said, a three-strike-you're-out thing. I do, I believe there could be recommendations, recommendations on the number of times of offenses. And I want to use something that seems very ubiquitous right now, and another parent brought it up about classroom disruption. So I went back and examined the classroom disruption. And I look at the required work for a teacher to document classroom disruption. It lists a multitude of restorative practices that must be deployed before the disruption moves to level one. So the teacher is being told to document, we don't know how many of these, because it doesn't say how many of these restorative practices you must deploy as a teacher to document this discipline. And huge burden. And I do recognize the importance of classroom management as a teacher. And it's the job of the teacher to fulfill these responsibilities. My, my issue is, I 100% wholeheartedly support restorative practices. And, and I do believe they are invaluable, but the problem is, by piling them up and saying to the teacher, "Here's your list", and not having any firm guidance of which ones or how many to do, you're diluting the impact of restorative justice. And we, we get this, we see the narrative out in the community that it's not working. Well, and, and this could be possibly it. Because when you see it thrown at you all the time and the list, and again, taken at a couple at a time, I think they're great. They could be very effective. But, and, and if, and if we, if we say, you know, that there actually is, you know, not an exhaustive list, well, then why not assign a specific number of how many you can do as a teacher for restorative practices? Because right now, without that clear guidance, there's too much discretion to site-based management and potentially who the principal or the AP is, or even who the teacher is, in determining how much documentation a teacher has to do just to get a kid moved from a classroom. We're talking just getting to level one. That's where I'm at with that. It was brought up, other offenses. We heard Allison poignantly talk about Rachel and other derogatory slurs. This is not a change in my statement, I believe they warrant an immediate level two. Especially at the secondary level. To me, secondary students are not naive about the impact of these words when they use and harass students with them. Students should not have to endure a year or even a multitude, repeated, these types of racial, sexual, whatever type of slurs that they're going to be. We are not the parents, and I'm stating that, that is not my job to be the parent of these students. And as I think Mr. Garber said, parents need to held, be held accountable. What you have your kids listen to at home, what you watch on the TV, that's your prerogative. But we, as a school system, can set the standard and say, "No, you're not going to be able to say the N-word X amount of times before you're kicked out." "No, you can't call that student who's LGBTQ the F-word this many, you know, a multitude of times." We can set the standard in our schools, the climate and culture. We don't necessarily have to say, "Level one, level two", I just, in my opinion, my opinion only, that especially at the secondary level, the, the language should go to a level two. There's a whole list of examples, and just to play on this whole idea of level one to level two, I give you a fire alarm. So, again, elementary, again, it suggests one, level one to three, right? Elementary kid, maybe an accident, you know, they're going to school, primary years. A high school kid pulls the alarm, a middle school kid pulls the alarm, the entire building is evacuated. Prince William County has to expend taxpayer resources to send fire trucks to the building, and level one is still an option? I, I just, I don't, I don't believe it, I'm going to give another one. Here's one, this one really hit close to home because I have a specific example. Student making threats with a weapon, although the weapon is not physically present. I had a student this year at one of my buildings. Another student told her the knives he was going to bring to school the next day and kill her with. Technically, that could be a level one to a level three. And to no surprise to me, that student was in the next day. Which to me, I lead the assumption that it was probably a level one because that student was not out of school. So, again, I think a lot of these, as we go through, that's, I'm not even talking about hitting the teacher, that says level one to three potentially. So as we go through this list, it's exhaustive. My main point here is, there needs to be clear guidance on when we move from a level one to a level two. And I think they need to be also resorted, even if it, some do say, elementary, one to this, secondary, this. I think these and many others could be just that example. You know, fire alarm, fighting, bullying, what have you, as we get into that. Lastly, I'm going to talk about bullying. So I do appreciate the division updating and augmenting the definition of bullying, putting it in the code of behavior, I think the definitions are needing, state, state policy is needed. And, and I do understand that many of these determinants of what is bullying is going to be subjective by the building leader, but ultimately leading to inconsistencies. So, I did spend a lot of time reviewing this document because it does, bullying is mentioned, I think, five different times in the document. It's kind of spread out sporadically in the document about what bullying is. And so, as I went through and broke down and saw it, there's four categories of bullying, which was helpful. But I had to make my own bullets and a little chart, maybe that could be helpful too. You have bullying without injury, category C, relationship behaviors, level one to three. Bullying without injury that is repeated, that goes level two to four. Bullying with energy, with inju- injury can result in two to four, level two to four, up to over 45-day suspension. Then there's cyber bullying, that relates to the threat and safety of staff and students, level three to five. Most of, I'm, I'm comfortable with those. I'm not comfortable with the first category, I don't think a level one should be in that area for bullying. But the other three, personally, that makes sense to me. If I was to go with the first one of category C, relationship behaviors, I would put that at a two or a three. But that's just my opinion. So, as I wrap up, as a parent, I worry about the instances of what we define as repeated bullying. Again, we've, we've heard from parents tonight about how many times something has happened to their child. There is no clear definition. And because there's no clear definition of what really defines repetition, and again, that might be a combination of the state being vague and a little bit of us. And, and like I, I've said to Dr. McDade, I have no problem, I've already gone once to the, the Virginia Board of Education in advocating for work-based learning. I'm happy to go down there and advocate to redefine what bullying is. But because the process is ambiguous, it's extremely difficult for parents to understand the procedures and the bullying process. I look at the revised code of behavior and, and I had difficulty finding information. And I like to think I'm educated, I have a master's and, and, and so, but I also think of families. Who's going to assist the families, especially those whose English is their, you know, second language in navigating through this code of behavior when bullying is a, a complicated topic? I mean, we have categories, we have tiers, we have levels. You know, and, and the, finally, I'll say the code of behavior repeatedly mentions the parent submission form. I understand this, and a couple of parents have mentioned tonight, that I do view this as, you know, requiring the victims to be brave, strong, to defend themselves. We heard tonight about the kids who can't defend themselves. I often wonder what's going on with my son who's non-verbal in school. I don't know, he can't come home and tell me. So who's out there looking out for them? I, with the bullying, I believe that when we're addressing bullying, that sometimes it can place more of a burden on the victim and their family than the alleged bully. So, tonight, I will be voting no on the current state of where the proposed code of behavior is. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Dr. Latif, can see my finger hovering above the button. So I appreciate hearing from my colleague, Mr. Wilk, with his thoughts. And it was about a year ago, I think, when I said I had three Bs were my concern, buses, bathrooms, and behavior. And I think, you know, we're making progress on buses. I think bathrooms has helped, at least in the middle schools that I have where cell phones are now off and away. And behavior, you know, obviously code of behavior is what we're talking about tonight. So I have maybe three main points, and then I have a couple of questions. So my first point is, I do continue to be concerned about student behavior because it interferes with the learning process, and I want our students, so many of our students want to be in school and they want to learn. And when other students are misbehaving, it disrupts that learning process. And, and that therefore interferes with our primary goal, which is to help our students learn. And the code of behavior, I know, is designed to create an environment where we ha- can correct unacceptable behavior, which is the purpose of discipline. So, you know, if you think about discipline in the sense of rehabilitation, deterrence, prevention, and of course punishment, you know, those four key principles. And the goal is, of course, to try to strike the balance. Keeping in mind that these are children, they're not perfect, they're learning. And, you know, we're looking for corrective action and rehabilitation as our goal, not necessarily to just, you know, punish them. Keeping in mind, as Mr. Wilk pointed out, you know, the culture, our culture to some extent has become more crude, more vulgar, more tolerant of disrespectful behaviors towards others, to elders, to authority. You know, this is kind of part of the stew that we live, or soup that we live in. It, and this can be a very difficult environment, environment for teachers. And also very difficult for students who just want to learn. So that's my first point. My second point is, I do believe that the biggest sticking point overall with the code of behavior right now is the section on responding to student behaviors. I do appreciate the language that is put in here, there's a lot of addition, added language. And I do believe it is more robust, more informative, and more transparent. Reading it, I feel like it actually was easier to read, taking it out of a chart format and putting it in a, a read format, for me anyway, it was easier to process. So I'm, I'm in favor of these changes that you made, and thank you for listening to the response, you know, the feedback from everybody. I do appreciate the, I, I just think it's, the additional links, I don't, I don't know if they were already in there, but the hyperlinks to the Virginia code, I thought that was also really good. And I know this document is going to be an online document, correct?
Correct, it will be searchable and.
It will be searchable, and I think that's great because if you, and you want to go look at the code, you know, what is, what, what are the provisions for expulsion? For instance, you can hyperlink to it and answer your question right then and there. So I think that's great. I think that kind of transparency. I think that kind of transparency and additional information is really helpful, and I think that's a significant improvement to the code of behavior, and I'm a fan of that. Responding, kind of piggybacking on something Mr. Wilk was saying, I do think we have more to do with implementation and norming our practices. And I believe what I'd like to see is maybe some more, maybe this exists and I just haven't seen it, but more along the lines of sentencing guidelines, so to speak, that's a different, you know, a word, a phrase from a different, from law. But I think that's what Mr. Wilk is referring to, where you kinda give your educators or your leaders more understanding of what would be an appropriate response for certain kinds of behaviors. Like, yeah, it's level three, one through three, but generally, we recommend level three because this has been successful in preventing the student, teaching them the lesson that they need to learn, but to correct the unacceptable behavior. Does that make sense where I'm going with this? Like, maybe on the implementation side, creating more structures around what seems to be working. You know, are there certain kinds of disciplines that schools are using that are working, that actually arrest the behavior, and the student goes, "Oh, I'm not gonna do that anymore." So I think that would be helpful, and I know that's on the implementation side, and I know we are working towards that. I do acknowledge that staff is working towards that, and our team, building leaders are working towards understanding that. I think that will bring more consistency of application, it will reduce the variability that folks came and talked to us tonight about, you know, where one school disciplines is kinda in this universe, and another school disciplines in a very different universe of options. And then, you know, folks talk from different schools, and they find out like, "Well, my kid did that exact same thing, and I got this punishment." You know, we just need to norm it, we need to bring it closer in. So that's my third point. And then my two questions are, and I don't know if they need to be answered right now, but I have had folks ask me these questions. And one is, how long have, well, on our path of restorative practices, are we collecting evidence that this is working or not? And how do we know that which restorative practices are helping us with the rehabilitation, the prevention, the deterrence sides of things? That's one question. And the other question I have gotten from community members is, "Do all of our schools have behavioral specialists to assist? Or is this an ongoing area of need as far as supports for schools in dealing with difficult behavior?" Maybe that question could be answered, I don't know. Either question that you wanna answer, I would be happy to take either now or, you know, like, get an answer back. I mean, is this an additional resource that we need? Do we need additional behavioral specialists to assist?
The behavioral specialists fall under Dr. Ryer. I will say that schools have access, but each school does not have their own behavioral specialist at this time. But we do have MTSS support that's available for all schools. I also just, in reference, as a reminder, the code of behavior is a public-facing document that helps students, stakeholders, teachers, and staff understand what are violations of the code of behavior, what possible consequences are. And, you know, again, to your point, building out backwards and implementation guide is something that the administrative guide would be working toward, common expectations. And as far as restorative practices, it's something that, as you remember, if you'll recall, we are now, just this year, initiating additional training, systemic-wide training. And so that will be something forward that we would be looking at the results of.
Okay, great, because I think that's always good to look at. As far as like, okay, so we have these restorative practices, are they working? What's working better than others? What's not working? With the desirable result being to correct unacceptable behavior and move kids forward to a place where, yes, they've been punished, but they've also learned something and become a better person, who is more able to participate with peers in a learning environment. You know, keeping in mind, again, like I said, these are children. So you're saying that there's a, there are internal and more private-facing documents that we are ongoingly developed, that will help?
We do have, what is, the code of Virginia, the model guidance from Virginia, does help us construct an administrator's guide, which is logisticals, here's how we enter discipline referrals. The goal is to build that out to norm, as we've talked about, our implementation across the division. That comes with feedback from stakeholders of all, you know, levels, teachers, administrators, building, staff. So that is the goal, is to build that out for that consistency. And the leveled responses that you see, I understand that there's a range of behaviors. That is the guidance that we receive, you know, from the state. I do know that the state is looking at model policies right now and guidance for bullying. The guidance that we currently have has not been updated since 2014. And so while it is a resource, the 2021 model guidance that we use to develop the code of behavior is the most recent guidance that we have.
Okay, that's good information. And then I will say one last point, I guess I have a fourth point, I'm so sorry. I thought I had three, but I have a four. On the topic of cellphones and its link to behavior, I have a number of schools in my district that have had an off-and-away policy for three years. And they have noticed a distinct drop in behavioral issues because the phones are off and away. That creates more focus, more attention, the teacher's more in control, by virtue of not having to compete with a really exciting phone, YouTube and TikTok and whatever is on there. Incidents of bullying, this is what I've been told, so I don't actually have access to any data, the incidents of bullying is down, Title IX reports are down. You know, a number of positive improvements have happened with very minimal input or pushback from parents, because the learning environment is improving. And this is reflected, I think, in my experience, I rarely get complaints about crazy behavior. And either people are just not telling me, which is possible, or things are going pretty well in the Gainesville district. And I do believe, of course, when your child is the offender, parents complain that punishment is too harsh, and when the child is, this is in general, when the child is the offender, parents will usually complain that the punishment wasn't harsh enough, right? But aside from that, I do believe that when we clamp down on just a simple thing like a phone, can make a huge difference in behavior and make it so much easier for our teachers to be front and center and be able to maintain control of the classroom. So I am looking forward, I know we talked about that at our last meeting, and I'm really excited about seeing a division-wide push toward assisting our teachers in this really important way so that they can help students learn. So that's just some feedback on that topic. Thank you.
I'm gonna piggyback on the cellphone thing, because I have several schools in my district that also have, what is it, off-and-away, is that what we're calling it? So, I know that there's some districts nearby that are doing, that they're gonna explore like lock boxes and things like that. To my knowledge, we don't do that in Prince William. So, if you can report that there's been positive feedback and success. And I can say that initially, one of my schools started it this year. I heard in the first couple of weeks some concerns from parents, after that, nothing. And when I checked in with admin at that school, they were saying that lunchtime was going better, kids were actually talking to each other instead of texting. I have another school that has had it implemented for a while now, and the kids, they knew automatically that they could not touch their phones unless it was the end of the day. They did not need any lock boxes or anything. I have a neighbor in my neighborhood, she teaches at one of the high schools, not in the Coles District, but she's, but she's one of our high school teachers. She requires her students to just put their stuff in their backpack. Backpacks go in front of the room so they can see their backpack, you know, just to take care of that. But, and she's reported that it works. So, you know, I think this is something we can actually just do. I don't think it requires boxes and little, or doesn't have to, I guess we could look at that. The other thing I wanna just say is, parents, teachers, and students all care about how learning goes in a classroom. We all want it to go well, right? And I think we have to look at how we help each other. Whether this code of behavior is the one, or there's one you wish it could be, I think really what we need to be thinking about now is, if a teacher reports something to a parent, the parent and the teacher work together, okay? And Mr. Wilk, I know you were talking about the how many times. That could be a little weird too, right? Because what if you finally find the thing that clicks with a kid, and that's working, and that thing doesn't work with another kid, and you're working with the parent? Like, I think there is a, there's a possibility for flexibility. And if this is not the code of behavior you want, I think the communication is important. I think writing an email and documenting the facts of what's going on. "Hey, my kid came home sad and said there was a kid who did blah. Can we have a conversation?" Just stay with facts and keep it in an email. And, you know, I have received emails where people include me, and they must have gotten to a point where they're frustrated because they put me on it. But I don't get a lot of emails, and I don't get a lot of, you know, I get some concerns, but not at the same level maybe as other places. And again, I don't know if it's because they're not reporting, or if it's because things are working out. But regardless, what I'm saying is, let's work together to make sure that our kids are getting their education, that we're supporting teachers, we're supporting parents. Because if we're just gonna point fingers, and this is not enough, and this is not enough numbers and time, or whatever, like, everybody's different, parents are different, kids are different, teachers are different. New teachers don't have this, necessarily have the same classroom management skills that very first year as maybe someone who's been around a little bit longer. You go to one school where expectations and behavior are one way, and you move to a new school and it's a little bit different, there's always an adjustment period. So I think we can all work a little bit better on communicating what our kids need, and then we can work through those levels together too. Because those level one things, we don't want them to become something worse, right? But if we're gonna just only stick to, well, this code only says this and says that, I think we're missing a greater point here, which is, we're all here for the kids. So if there's something we need to work on and fix and everything, we also need some documentation. So, you know, make sure we get the emails and those things. But document it with, you know, "This happened, this happened, this happened." What's my next step? If you don't get an answer within, what is it, we normally expect 24-hour turnaround on emails, then you reemail, figure out a way to maybe then see what the next step is. But let's work together. Thank you.
I had Erica next, then we'll go to Lori and Mr. Jesse.
My apologies, Ms. Hubner, when I asked my question, I didn't realize we were making our closing remarks, so I could've just gotten mine out of the way.
Feel free to do it right now, too.
Yes. Mr. Wilk had a lot of great points and went back over some of what we talked about last week. I agree with most of what Mr. Wilk had said. While going through this and listening to you talk, I just imagine the teacher is going through those tears. And I can't imagine that they have the time to memorize the entire code of behavior. And when an instance happens, and they're trying to figure out, "What do I do?", and then they're, you know, running through that in the middle of also running a classroom, I just sympathize with them in that moment, and the confusion. And like Mr. Wilk said, you know, there's a lot of additions, there's a lot of things that happen, and their bullying was mentioned so many different times. To sit here and say that it's not a long document, that's a confusing document to go through, that has a lot of language that almost contradicts itself in some ways throughout the document, which I did point out a little bit last time, I struggle in that respect. I am not, like everybody else up here that has said they don't get a lot of emails, my inbox is slammed. And since I put out a survey on the code of behavior, the last time I checked, I had over 400 responses to a survey that I created with questions regarding the code of behavior. And overwhelmingly, over 90% agreed with the lack of clear consequences, with the confusion. It was a resounding voice, and I continue on a daily basis to get emails regarding behavior. Another thing that was brought up by the mom that spoke, "I empathize with you, I have biracial children, and I understand what you just said, and I get it." And like I said before, regarding the N-word and what Mr. Wilk said, I cannot emphasize enough that it's a problem, it's a huge problem. And it's okay for one person, and it's not okay for another, and talk about confusion. Talk about confusion. It's a problem, it's a huge problem, and I'll continue to talk about it, and I'll continue to say it. The cellphones, I know Dr. Latif supports a full ban. I, again, I believe that one of my children's schools does, somebody said "up, up in a way", "off in a way", it's a cute saying, and in theory, it's great. I know that it's not fully implemented, because if it was off in a way, we shouldn't be able to contact them, and they shouldn't be able to contact us. And I know for a fact that that doesn't happen, because we all get contacted all the time. So it might be a way, it's not off, and they might be putting it away, and it could help solve some of the problems. But like I said before, my 16-year-old is not happy with me, but, I mean, ban them, get rid of them, I'm all for it. You know, I think a lot of us parents with older kids would stop getting the text messages, "Can you come get me? Let me out, get me out, I'm done, I have no more tests." Like, come on, we all get that, we all see those memes. If they can't, if they can't do that, they gotta make it till 2 o'clock, sorry. Sorry, bud, you gotta make it till 2 o'clock. And we have the ability to say, "No, thank you", but, I mean, come on, the 35 texts that we get, like, "I'm hungry, can you bring me Chipotle?", come on, the parents know what I'm talking about. So, I support a full ban on the cellphones, and I would love to see Dr. Latif make it happen with the help of the rest of us on this board. So, tonight, I've made the decision to vote against the code of behavior. "The absence of clear guidelines, the confusion surrounding tiers, which are subject to interpretation by individual schools or principals, result in inconsistencies countywide, and also fails to provide adequate support for teachers. Additionally, each school determining its own enforcement methods contributes to a lack of transparent consequences, which is confusing for parents and does not provide clarity for students either." Ms. Hubner, I appreciate all your hard work, I know that it's a ton of work to give us this presentation. But unfortunately, I cannot agree with it in its entirety, so, thank you.
Ms. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Hubner, her staff, all of the stakeholders involved in putting this living document together. I will be voting in support of the code of behavior because I understand that it is a living document, it does change, and it is something necessary to provide guidance for our school division. If this becomes a no vote and we have no code of behavior, we will have even less response, because there will be not, there will not be any guidelines for discipline, for any school rules or policies, because it is all located in the code of behavior. And as much as I do not like this antiquated expression, I don't believe in throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and that would be essentially what would happen if the code of behavior did not pass. What I will say is that, in my time here, the code of behavior has continued to improve. I can agree that it is not where I would like it to be in its fullest, but I also understand that my opinion will vary greatly from anybody sitting to my left or right or the audience in front of me. What I do know is, and what I have heard, is not necessarily issues with the code of behavior. What I am consistently hearing is issues with the implementation. And I think that's where the focus needs to be. Because while it is different from school to school, Mr. Wilk, please correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard you saying was there was no in-school suspension, but I see it listed as an option here. Assistant. Okay, that's why I was asking for your correction. No, 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 don't apologize, because I asked for it. So, and I think that that, this is a good example. You know, I didn't understand what he was saying just based upon what I read, and I think that's the problem that a lot of individuals have when we look at this document. Everybody looks through a different lens. It's not saying restorative justice practices do not substitute for disciplinary action anywhere. But yet, we hear that ever since we started down this journey. We hear that disciplinary actions are enforced differently at different schools. How on earth do you absolutely know that when we are not allowed to let you know what happened to the student who received discipline? You only know that through word of mouth. And I guarantee you, as a parent, I'm completely frustrated. I have lived that experience myself. I have heard people tell me what they thought happened to the student involved, because that's what they know, is what they thought happened. And I wanna be perfectly clear about that. That is the response we get all of the time. It is the same thing when students send a text message because the school is on lockdown, and you will get six parents who say they heard that the school's under some sort of fire, and 17 parents over here that say they have no idea this even happened, and you get a plethora of responses. I think we will always be faced with that, because we aren't allowed to disclose what happened to the student. And I think it's very important that the public understands that. That is not our decision. There are student privacy laws, there's all sorts of things that are around that, that is not a decision made by this board, or any board that's come before it, or any board that will come after it. It is not up to us to make that a transparent for other families and... It is not up to us to make that a transparent for other families involved in disciplinary. You want to make it change, it needs to go to the lawmakers, not to this board, because the onus doesn't belong to us. That is something I consistently hear, and I think that also creates confusion. What I will agree with, and Mr. Wilk, we're going on a streak here with the, the agreements on the code of behavior, is I, I do think, you know, if, if it's okay for a bully to fill out a form, what I'm hearing consistency is lack of guidance for teachers how to implement the forms that they have. That's not something you're gonna find in the code of behavior. I appreciate that it is something that is being worked on, but it's clearly not being communicated enough to our staff and our public, that it isn't in existence right now, that we are in the process of developing it, and that you have the opportunity to comment, and that everyone who comes into contact with that document will receive the same consistent training on how to implement it once that guidance is developed. Because that is the sticking point that we hear. There's always going to be a slight variation because no one incident, no two incidents are exactly the same. What motivates one student to come to school and use disrespectful language is not gonna be the same for another student. If a student is, depending on their age level and cognitive abilities, that should make a difference on what punishment they receive. But the other part of this that we don't have any control over as a board and in today's society is what is the response from parents and guardians? What is acceptable and deemed okay in someone's household that then that student brings to school with them, those behaviors? I said it last time, the, last year was the first time in 10 years in sitting on disciplinary that I have heard a parent tell me that we didn't do a good enough job disciplining their students because that's where they expected the discipline to occur, because they don't discipline their student at home. So this is the times that we live in. I, I think it would be imperative of this administration, because again, the board does policy, we do not do operations, to be very clear moving forward, what that guidance is for our staff. Because that's not a code of behavior discussion in, in, in the document form, that is an implementation discussion. And it keeps coming back up again and again, and that's why I'm emphasizing it. Outside of that, personally, as a school board member, I appreciate the subjective language removal when it comes to dress code, because I think I am on year number eight of asking to please take it out, because what one person deems as too much skin exposure is completely different from another person, it depends on your generation. And as our student representative who loves her crop tops and pretty much that's all you can find for most young ladies nowadays in the stores, that could have earned her a suspension a few years ago. So I appreciate that. I also think it's time that we really have a serious discussion on subjective language. Because again, you know, what is deemed okay in one person's household by what is considered a derogatory term, it depends on the context that it is used in, it depends on the culture it's coming from, and it depends on the situation in which you use it. It's not going to be acceptable for every single family, every single time, period, it's just not. Because what is acceptable in my culture may not be acceptable in Mr. Blake's culture, sorry to pick on you for example, or Ms. Zargarpur's household. And it's also not the school division's responsibility to make that determination of what is acceptable in someone's culture and language. It is our, our job to set a standard, but we need to be very careful when we wade into those territories and we should be really receiving a lot of input from multiple stakeholders when we make that decision. Because we are now the 10th most diverse culture, county in the nation, and things that most people who have lived here a very long time are not accustomed to hearing, you're gonna hear now. Because there's a lot more different people here. And, and it's something that we should discuss and we should norm as a practice, but we should not deem one view as the acceptable view, because we have a lot of people to take into consideration. And that's part of what it is that we're doing. And so I just want to again thank everyone for the time and energy and effort, I see this as an evolution and progress. I would very much like, as Ms. Wall said, some information on how it is that our restorative practices are working and maybe a presentation not only to the board but to the public as well, along with another more detailed descriptive, description of what restorative practices are. Because I don't think we can educate our public enough, the difference between restorative practices and discipline, and sometimes where they intersect and where they may not. So I will be supporting the code of behavior, but I would very, very much like to see and hear more about the administrative side of the implementation of the code of behavior. Because that's what we're hearing from our public and our constituents. And also, if there is a note in the code of behavior somewhere that maybe highlight, bold-faced, I don't know, to bring attention to, that we cannot disclose what discipline is given to the student, I don't, I'm sure it's in there, I don't know what page, but it needs to be bold-faced. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse.
I'd first like to ask a question, and once I get the answer to the question, then I'd like to have follow-up. Perhaps I should know this, but I really don't, when we say in-school suspension, particularly for high school and middle school, what does that mean and how is it implemented?
Mr. Jesse, in-school suspension would be removal from the usual, the typical instructional setting. And as far as implementation, it would vary depending on the location, the staffing, what have you, from school to school, but consistently, I can tell you, it would mean removal from the classroom instruction.
Yeah, and that's the problem I have with that, because where are you gonna put the kid? The kid is acting up, you don't, and particularly in a lot of our schools, there is no extra classroom, there is no extra teacher, where do you put this kid, three or four or five kids that are acting up? And, you know, so the in-school suspension is a problem. Not that I don't think it should happen, but I don't think it's realistic. And it also creates a problem for, somebody has to supervise or should be supervising the kids in there. This whole issue, and I said it last week and I'll say this again to Ms. Williams, every parent and every family has different rules and regulations, but when they come to this school system, we are responsible for setting rules. And they have to live by those rules. And if they don't live by the rules, they should be punished. The other problem we have, we were talking about, you know, inconsistency between the, if the, we have to have rules for the teachers, the principals, the administrators, and if they're not abiding by the rules, they have to be held accountable also. And part of the problem is, is that they are not held accountable because we don't know. As I used to tell employees, you can't expect your manager to fix something that they don't even know exists. I, I have been told recently that I, there is a school in my district that they don't fill out the complaint form, they just send the kids to the student, to the office, but I guess there's a form that they're supposed to fill out. They're not doing it, okay? If that's the rule and they're not doing it, then that's, that's on the principal or administration that has to be held accountable. But if you don't know, you can't fix it. Now, the lady that was here earlier, I understand what she was saying. She talked to, four times to the principal of the school, got no response or inappropriate response. It was brought up and we sent it up to, to the executive cabinet, and then somebody talked to her. But again, that, that principle needs to be held accountable because it's clearly something that should be done. So it's a complicated situation. I'm gonna vote for this tonight, but it's not a perfect document and it's got a lot of problems. But, and I, I hate this term, living document, because a lot of the time, the living document goes for a couple of years before it ever gets fixed. So we need to fix them a little faster, but we need to make improvements, but we have to have something, and this is, it leads a good step. And we have to make sure that our, our folks, our constituents, we have over a hundred, almost 100 schools. It is a hard, difficult task. And I hate to say it, we can't even get agreement, I, I'm, you know, I get sick every day listening to this case with former President Trump. Obviously, the laws are not consistent, the application of the laws are not consistent, but we have to do the best we can to make them consistent, and that's part of the problem, our, our interpretation. What is offensive to you might not be offensive to me. But we have to say, in this school system, here is what's appropriate, and if you don't abide by that, that's inappropriate and we're gonna deal with it. And if you don't like it, go to the public's private school or so forth. You know, sitting on a disciplinary committee, I see sometimes kids that basically have all failing grades. It doesn't surprise me that they're getting the problem, because they heck, they're not obviously studying in school and they don't want to be there. And that's a problem. So, you know, we just have to handle that and we have to deal with the reality. There, with 90,000 kids, to be honest, we don't have a heck of a lot of problems. But those problems that we do have impact, and if it's your kid that's being bullied or whatever, then that's a problem and you have to deal with that and you have to respect, it doesn't matter if, that's the only person out of 90,000, that person deserved to have proper treatment and proper enforcement. Thank you.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to say this, this code's strength lies in its holistic approach and it not only sets out expected behaviors, but it also emphasizes the importance of shared understanding amongst students, staff, and community. By delineating positive behaviors and providing strategic guidance on how to achieve them, the code plays a critical role in guiding our students towards academic and personal success. Moreover, their inclusion of the preventative and restorative practices is a testament to our commitment to proactive rather than purely reactive measures. Through the implementation of the positive, uh, positive behavior interventions and supports in the restorative practices with the multi-tiered system supports, our approach is geared towards preventing issues before they escalate. And the proactive and responsive nature of the restorative practice further enhances our educational environment. By focusing and building community, repairing harm, and preventing future conflicts, these practices underscore our dedication to maintaining a harmonious school climate. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to Dr. McDade, Ms. Hubner, and their dedicated staff for the tireless effort in crafting such a comprehensive code of behavior. I know it wasn't easy. Their work has been instrumental in aligning our district's policies with the best practices outlined in the VO, or the Virginia Department of Education's model guidance for positive and preventive code of student conduct and policy. So I, I feel this code of behavior is a strong testament to our district's unwavering commitment to creating a nurturing educational environment that respects and promotes the well-being and success of every student, and for that, I will be supporting this code of behavior. Thank you.
Ms. Wall, only because you weren't here last week.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I, I just wanted to conclude by saying I do appreciate the edits made to the document. I do believe it improves transparency, it gives, as you, as Ms. Hubner stated, it is a public-facing document designed for families and students and teachers to understand, you know, what we expect. I do believe that we've made a lot of improvements in giving more clear information and then we've improved the readability. And my assessment of our challenges with student behavior is that it's not so much the code of behavior document itself, but the implementation, which is a separate issue, and I know it's one we're working on. And so for these reasons, my vote will be reflective, not so much that I, that I think we don't have additional work to do, but that I recognize that we are making progress toward a very important goal, which is teaching children how to behave so that learning can occur in our classrooms. And thank you.
Dr. Latif, I just had one more question.
Sure, Mr.
If, if this was a no vote, would the code of behavior cease to exist and we would have nothing, nothing governing any guidelines? Can you answer that question for me, Ms. Hubner?
Is it, that's the way, I think that's the question for general counsel.
Yeah.
My understanding is the current code will continue to exist and we work on, all we're approving is the changes to the code of behavior today.
Right, because you've, you've approved the current, the current code in effect and there's no automatic sunset of that code, then that code would continue because that was the board's vote. In other words, every time you approve the code annually, you are superseding the prior existing code and replacing it.
We're just voting to approve the changes, and so the, the last one would, would continue to exist even if it was voted no. I just wanted to clarify.
Correct, you're, you're in effect voting to supplant the current existing code with a new code.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just, since I'll, I'll be last here and relatively brief, that is correct, I, I think that's important to know, that we're voting on changes, we do this every year, many of the changes are in compliance with laws that are changed in the General Assembly each year that require us to change our code of behavior to come into compliance with state laws and any new federal laws that may be implicated. I, I want to thank Dr. McDade, the work Ms. Hubner's done, this is my seventh or eighth code of behavior vote, maybe seventh. And, and, and you know, I'll just point out that, you know, I'm as guilty as sort of anybody in romanticizing the past. I'm Generation X, for whatever that means. And, and, and you know, I was bullied as a kid for my name, I was bullied as a kid for my religion, I was bullied as a kid for what I brought to lunch to eat that was different than everyone else's. There was no one in those days to report that to. We didn't have counselors in elementary school. It was something you just didn't really report to anybody and you never told your parents because you were ashamed to be bullied. And so it was a different time. And so maybe in those days, if you ran the stats on schools and bullying, it would look like bullying is a lot less. We are living in a time now where, I think we've encouraged people to report things. We have Title IX, Title VI, Title I. You know, a number of different laws have come into effect because of the way Generation X may have grown up and, and thought that maybe things should be better or different or improved. We have social media now that takes something that wouldn't have ever been reported and now everyone can see it. That's good and bad. And, and so we, we have this romanticized version of the past, that it's, it was always great, it was better when we were younger and, 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 and you know, things aren't as good. When I grew up, when I graduated high school in 1990, there were four students with a perfect score on the SAT in all of America. Four. Nowadays, you have four in every high school and some of the good high schools. It's not that the test became easier, because trust me, I have four children and they're all studying for it, and it's as rigorous as it was, if not more, in many ways. But we have many more support systems, thanks Tracy, if you wanna, if you wanna finish, you wanna finish up for me? No. We have many more support systems, like the school division pays for students to take the SAT, which we didn't have when I was growing up. We have probably, and I think this is accurate, higher average SAT scores of students in the county now than probably 30 or 40 years ago. And that's not because the test became easier, it's because we have done what, sort of, if you were wealthy in the 80s, you could afford Kaplan courses or Princeton review courses and you could prep for it. And that was something new at that time. Now it's relatively, you can go online and, and Khan Academy can provide you what we were getting back then for hundreds of dollars, you can get it for free. And so things were always more romantic, you know, that, you know, you think it was better back then, but, but in many ways, we have enormous progress. And I look at this work that your office has done and, in response to, you know, you know, challenges that teachers face in the classroom and, and that we, we face as, as folks who are in charge of governance and oversight and, and what our teachers face on a daily basis and what our parents feel. and, and what our teachers face on a daily basis, and what our parents feel, and what kids feel, this is constantly something that has to improve. We're doing it. And I think, you know, Ms. Williams, Ms. Wall both point out, and as did Mr. Wilk and Tridanic, that, you know, enforcement is, is critical and consistency. And Dr. McDade, when she came here, you know, one of the first hundred-day things she noted was a lack of consistent practices across the division. Whether it be in just behavior, whether it be in governance and oversight of school functionings, whether it's transportation in one building versus another, you know, there, there, we, we, um, have to get better at that. And that's why the fourth part of our strategic plan, is it fourth, Dr. McDade? Organizational coherence, is four? Is organizational coherence. And so this goes a long way to helping us get there, and I appreciate all your work. So I will support the changes in the code of behavior as well. And, and so I look forward to making that vote here. Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to, before the board does take the vote, a couple of things. One, um, I do agree with, there was a lot of things said tonight, and there's a lot of things that I agree with. I do want to make sure for clarification that Ms. Heebner worked with a diverse body of individuals to, to kind of craft this. And they didn't craft it based on their own desire or wish for what would go in there. What they tried to do was to make sure that it stayed tightly aligned to the model guidance from VDOE. So anything that you see in the code of behavior isn't like a PWCS, um, specific, um, rule or recommendation, everything you'll see in the code of behavior is aligned to the, the model guidance that we got from VDOE because straying too far away from that can get us into some legal trouble as well. So what I will say is, based on what I heard, though, it is a dynamic document. It's a, it's a policy that the board owns. So even based on, like, we asked for red lines. We got some, we got some feedback from, um, you know, what we got from parents, from teachers, et cetera. And you'll see that the changes that were made did reflect some of the red lines that we did get. Those red lines that maybe were too far away from the model guidance is what we didn't, you know, put, opt to put into the, the document. But there were some practical things that were mentioned with specific examples of, like, yes, something could be a level one through a three, but the document could say what a, what the recommendation is as opposed to just leaving it open. Things like that, I think, are things that can be considered as long as whatever is recommended, you know, is still in alignment with what the VDOE considers acceptable. So I would offer that, you know, this be a dynamic document where even after some of the specific examples we got tonight, if there are things that we can go back and review and look at and say, we, we can add these things and bring it back to the board, we're, we're happy to do that. And so that it's not just a, a one and done, you know, if we can make improvements.
Excellent, Dr. McDade. And I, I would just reiterate my, you know, I, we've talked about the cell phones. I've talked about it both privately, publicly, um, and among board members. And I, and I do think that, I do appreciate the pilot you're going to do. It's all middle schools next year? What are we doing? Or it's all middle schools have done? We've already done the pilot. What's the deal on that?
It's all middle schools, and there are additional elementary and high schools that have been identified.
And I, and I just think, if one of the things we look at on the dynamic aspects of the document, Dr. McDade, is just consideration on, on how we can get there a little faster on that, that issue.
And again, you know, the board owns policies. So if it is the board's will to have a policy on cellphone sooner, we can absolutely do that. The goal for the pilot really wasn't just about, let's pilot and see what's going to happen. It was about trying to engage families as well and not just spring something on them. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that the pilot goes the whole year before we craft policy. But it would give an opportunity to get some communication out to families that something, that this is coming.
Yeah. Fantastic. Okay. Please vote. No, actually, someone needs, um, oh, did you? Did we do that? Okay, outstanding, good work. Did we do that? I don't remember. Oh, okay, great.
The vote is six yes, two no. Tridanic, Wilk, motion passed.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to our student representative, who's sat through this. And then we've ended her, is this your final meeting, Fernando Morante? Uh, Forest Park High School is with us this evening. And I will turn the, um, meeting to you.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. McDade, my parents are there, hi, and Prince William County Community. It's hard to believe that this is my last board meeting. I do have fun listening to everything. I'll give my comments later. But I do want to start these last remarks by thanking the board for allowing me to represent the over ninety thousand student voices in the county this year. It has been an honor to serve as one of the student representatives, and I really do hope that I have left a positive impact in our community. These remarks might be a little bit longer than usual, but this is the last time you'll hear me, I promise. At least in this seat, in this seat. So I'll give my last couple pieces of input from a couple of student-related topics, of what they call code of behavior as well. And then just a year wrapped about my experience as a student rep, and then thanking some really important people from my support system. To start off, I'd like to recognize Forest Park High School and Patriot High School's FCCLA chapters for their outstanding participation at the Virginia FCCLA Leadership Conference. FCCLA stands for Family Community, Family Community Career Leadership, Leaders of America. We went down to Virginia Beach, um, in April to participate in the leadership conference at the state level. Patriot High School had a big team of leaders, and we're awarded with lots of recognition because of their various projects entered. And a lot of participants qualified for the National Leadership Conference that will be held in Seattle, Washington this summer. And Forest Park was also in competition and entered projects in five different categories. We ended up getting first, second, third, fourth, and fifth places in all of the entries we had. And two of our teams qualified for nationals. And one team, which I'm a part of, um, got first place in event management category with multicultural night that we hosted at Forest Park earlier in March. And we will be traveling to Seattle this summer, which is really exciting. So Joshua Thiermalai, a senior at Forest Park High School, and our sponsor, Ms. Gonzalez, we will all be traveling and competing nationally. And so congratulations to both schools for their awards, as well as Colgan High School for their amazing participation. It's the first year Colgan has an FCCLA chapter, and they're already competing at the state level, which is really impressive. I know they're not here anymore, but Julia, I think it was her name, from Woodbridge High School, um, about the NAMI on campus at Woodbridge. They did support Forest Park, uh, starting their own chapter. So it's really a great work that they do on campus, and it truly shows, um, the advocacy that students have for mental health. And Unit of Reads, JROTC, um, Air Force Drill Team, their performance was amazing. I've never seen anything like that. So congratulations to them as well. And thank you to Independence High School for kicking us off to grad season. Seniors at Independence graduated this past week. So congratulations to all graduates. And congratulations also to all the seniors around the county as we embark in our post-high school journey. In the last couple of weeks, uh, schools like Forest Park and Colgan have celebrated decision day. So congratulations to all my fellow seniors. So whether you have decided to go into the police or fire academy, the army workforce, or like, an internship, two-year college, four-year college, if you're staying in Virginia, if you're going out of state, um, I wish you the best. And if you're still deciding where to attend school, college admissions didn't go as expected, you're still waiting on financial aid packages, or your FAFSA, or waitlist, or you just don't know what to do next, that's okay. Don't worry, there's still time. I actually have to go home and put my deposit down tonight. But it's okay to be scared. I am too, and feeling anxious. Yeah. And it's okay to evaluate all of your options, maybe a little longer than, um, some of your peers. So don't feel rushed or behind. Everyone has their own timeline. And just know that Prince William County Schools believes in you, and it's excited to see where you go. Additionally, I want to share the work that the Student Senate and the school-based student voice committees have been doing recently. A couple of weeks ago, a draft of the Student Bill of Rights was sent out to each high school's student voice committees for review and suggestions. And all schools should have sent their recommendations regarding modifications or suggestions, improvements, or additions to the Bill of Rights for future review. We have a meeting on Monday, so we will go over all the suggestions then. And I wanted to bring this to the, to the board's attention because of something that came up during the meeting we had discussing this draft. We were brainstorming and working on the Bill of Rights. And one of the senators from the county brought up that all students should have access to menstrual products somewhere other than the nurse or clinic. I thought a little bit about what they said, and I decided to ask the room if anyone's school made use of the product dispensers that we have in the bathrooms. We don't use them at my school, so I was curious if any other school used them. But everyone said, they're just there, but they're always empty. So no, no schools offer menstrual products inside the bathrooms. They do offer them in the nurse or the clinic, but that's inconvenient and kind of defeats the point of having a dispenser inside the bathroom. So I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. I'm not sure if it's like site-based or something different. But kind of considering bringing back menstrual products inside the bathrooms so, um, we can facilitate students' access to them. And I hope this can be considered for the next school year. So about the code of behavior, um, from a student perspective, um, I'm honored to like, be in the discussion and understand what the code of behavior is and all of that stuff. But there's really no point on doing the modifications if us, as students, we don't understand what the code of behavior means. At the beginning of the year, we see, we, we are supposed, we're supposed to read the code of behavior. We're supposed to say we read it. I have to take a quiz that says, like, that you read this or not. I just click yes, and I, I'm done. And, um, there's a video about the code of behavior, which is like, maybe twenty years old. And like, the language they use, um, their dress code examples, their definition of bullying, it's really not in touch with reality or what we see now. So I think that, um, I think, like, one way that we can, uh, lower the incidents or like, the fights and all the, um, disrespectful behavior in schools is just telling the students that what's, what's right and what's wrong. They might not even know it. I might understand it. Isabella might understand it, but not everyone does. And understanding the code of behavior should not be a privilege. So what I think all the stakeholders can do is partner with the Student Senate or elementary school, middle school student representatives to just ask them, like, have them read the code of behavior. Ask them what they understand, what they don't understand. I think an updated video would be really cool. And if you even want to make it more, um, engaging with the students, you can contact all the drama departments at all levels. You can say whoever does the best video wins, like, and you'll have like, like, money for your department, for your next player, something like that. So I think that students understanding the code of behavior is really, really going to help lower those incidents. I don't know what happens if I take out my phone in class and I'm still sitting on this chair. Because I was, I'm supposed to read the code of behavior at the beginning of the year. But maybe I just read it and I didn't understand it. I don't know what I, like, if I walk out of school, nothing happens. But I don't, I don't know what should happen either, you know? So I think students understanding the code of behavior is really, um, important and something that can be improved, um, this next year. We also wanted to talk about more the Student Senate work for, uh, that we did this year. We established student voice committees in each high school. In our Senate meetings, we talked about substance abuse prevention, school safety, student leadership workshops, school-based concerns, the Bill of Rights, to name a few of them. And I truly think the team of senators we have is outstanding, and I hope their legacy continues in each of their high schools. And as I wrap up the work of the Student Senate, I also want to wrap up my experiences as a student rep this year. Back in May of last year, at around this time of May, I entered a Zoom meeting. It was an interview with about seventeen adults as part of the application process to be one of the student reps. It was intimidating. It was very scary, but it was definitely necessary to prepare me for what was to come and what being in this position means. And at my first board meeting, I was really nervous. I love to talk, if you didn't, if you didn't catch that already. I consider myself a pretty good speaker, but that night I was really scared and I was really nervous. I remember I talked about the SATs, coming back to school, wishing seniors good luck during college application season. And throughout the year, I've touched on different topics like bullying, student opportunities, safety in schools, inclement weather policies, and my personal favorite, middle school recess. I love to, um, work with Catalaya, Jay, and the whole middle school recess committee. And I'm truly impressed of all the, um, all the meetings and all the people that they've talked to. And, um, I really hope that coming back to a board meeting, um, next school year, can see in Catalaya finally getting that middle school recess. I was also honored to represent Prince William County Schools in the Virginia School Board Association annual conference. And I met and exchanged ideas with other student reps from around Virginia. And I attended diverse events in the county, like the inauguration of the Innovation Elementary School and the induction ceremony of the new board members. And I will be emceeing the retiree ceremony, um, next Tuesday. And I really can't put into words how amazing this experience has been and how honored I am to have served almost a hundred thousand students in our county. So thank you for putting your trust in me. And I really hope that your voices have had a space here and that I have inspired you to advocate for what you believe in. I'll get to the more emotional part now. Throughout this year, there have been multiple people that form my support system, which helped me succeed as a student rep. I want to extend my gratitude to Dr. McDade, who has been an amazing supporter ever since I met her, and a great seat buddy, too. Thank you as well to the whole board for always listening to my ideas and encouraging me, as well as being Anna, who have been there for me, always checking on me, showing me around the KLC, even though I got lost a couple of times, not going to lie. I was in some random office, but I made it up. And thank you also to the communications team for getting my good angles. And also for showcasing student activities through their videos. I'm actually the number-one fan of the YouTube and of the Instagram channel. So when they post something, I'm, I think I'm the first to see it. So I love seeing, um, my school there and other schools and other students doing what they love. So I really think that the, the work that they do is, it's, it's really amazing. Thank you also to Bella for being my fellow student rep this year. We've worked together and we have been there for each other this year. And I am lucky to have her support. You're an amazing leader, and I'm truly honored to share this seat with you. And, um, we have sat together at events where we knew nobody else. And we can relate to how fast our term has come to an end. And we even got to go to the White House together and meet Chris Evans. So I'm sure I will see you thriving in the future, and I wish you the best. Thank you to Jackie as well for stepping up when the opportunity came and always having a fresh perspective on different social and economic improvements that the county can do. And also want to send a thank you to Ms. Viola and Mr. Girvin. Ms. Viola has been my mentor throughout this term, and without her, I really could have not taken this position as I did. She replies to my emails in a span of seconds. I'm not joking, it's actually seconds. And she has given me fashion advice of what to wear to the meetings, suggestions of my remarks, so I don't make grammatical errors. And she's truly created a specific plan for the Student Senate and the student leadership workshops. And she has introduced me to other officials in the county and has always, always, always showed her support towards me and Bella and Jackie. So thank you so much, Ms. Viola. And finally, I'd like to thank my parents who are here today. I might get emotional, so, just, you know. My parents, my brother and I immigrated to Virginia from Peru three years ago, and their support has truly made me who I am today. We came here with uncertainties, not knowing how anything worked, not speaking the language in their case. And as we adapted to our new life in the United States, I taught them what clubs were, what AP classes and DE classes meant, why were they important, why I had to stay after school all the time, why I came home so late, what coming up was, what the FAFSA was. We sat together, like, what are taxes, like, what, what is this asking me? But together, we really have learned and grown and have made the most out of all the opportunities that they were, that were presented to us. And they have always been there for me. And without them, I could not have made my high school career as satisfying as it has been, or even serving the student community today. I'm extremely proud of them. And in only three years, um, they have grown so much as well. And they're both attending the Continental, Continental University of Florida in full-rite scholarships. My mom is working towards her bachelor's degree in business administration. And my dad is pursuing a master's degree in educational innovations. So I'm, I'm really proud of them, and I couldn't be there without them. Thank you for your time and putting your trust in me. And with that, I conclude my remarks and my term. Thank you so much.
Outstanding, Fernanda. Thank you so much. Whoever's covering her, her angles, I want to cover my angles. Okay, that's, that's the take-home message for the evening, okay? Number two, thank you so much, Fernanda, for, for your support of this, of the, the board this year. We really appreciate it, and I think you've brought some really good ideas. I saw Dr. McDade writing. She's probably sending a memo already on getting a new video out for the code of behavior, and maybe we can have Isabella and you and Jaclyn be in that video this year for us. Maybe we can have you guys introduce it, right? So thank you very much. All right, so wonderful, guys. That was, that was a great, a great way to end your term with us, and we truly appreciate it. Moving on to Dr. McDade's superintendent time, Dr. Latanya McDade.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I really want to just start out by thanking our student representatives to the school board, Isabella, Fernanda, and Jaclyn. It has been a true joy to sit next to you for every single meeting. You all have a different approach, you each had a different style, but nonetheless, each and every one of you were just so impactful, and I can't imagine us having these meetings without a student sitting here on the dais and providing their perspective, because student voice really is critically important, and Dr. Latif is right, I did make the note about the video, so there, so there will be an update. But that, but that's just an example of many different recommendations and feedback that we've gotten, not just from our board reps, but from our Student Senate as well, and from our student voice committees. And, and our students as leaders in this system and using their voice in advocacy for improvements and the betterment of their schools and communities really makes PWCS stronger and really makes a difference. And then on a personal note, I've gotten to know each of you, and I have learned so much about your aspirations and your goals, your motivations, what drives you. You have invited me to things that you were leading or organizing, and I had an opportunity to see you outside of the board meeting and just sitting in the seat, but seeing you in action and seeing you be able to thrive, and I'm just so incredibly proud of each of you and all that I know that, what you've already accomplished, and all that I know that you will accomplish in the future and the impact that you're going to make, not just for yourselves, but also for your community and for the betterment of our world. You are brilliant, you are talented, you are highly capable. Don't let anyone tell you anything different, and anybody that does, you can show them better than you can tell them. So keep up the great work. We are proud. PWCS is always your home, and if you ever need me personally, I will respond to the call. So congratulations. I love you, all three of you, and keep up the great work, and I hope that you all will stay in touch. All right, so moving on, I want to also recognize Sky Augur from Osborne Park High School for being named a 2024 National Merit Scholarship winner. From the semifinalist group, over 16,000 and over 15,000 students met the high academic standards and other requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. By the conclusion of the 2024 program, more than 6,870 finalists will have earned the Merit Scholar title and received a total of nearly 26 million in college scholarships. So congratulations to Sky on this monumental achievement. Prince William County Public Schools is observing Mental Health Awareness Month this May. Prioritizing mental health in schools is essential for the well-being and success of our students. We are hosting a variety of different events across the division to educate our communities and create a supportive environment where we can have honest conversations about mental health challenges without fear of judgment. Mental health affects us all, so it is important to take care of ourselves, each other, and help others to know exactly where to start if you need help. Mark your calendars. In celebration of National Physical Fitness and Sports Month, I am excited to invite all of our families to the inaugural PWCS Sports Fair. This will be our first sports fair. One of the things that I, I charge our Department of Athletics and Student Activities on is making sure that students are fully aware of not just the traditional sports, but even some of the non-traditional sports that they can be a part of, and to do that through a fair. And so we're having our first sports fair on Saturday, June 1st, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Kelly Leadership Building. This event will showcase the athletic opportunities available to middle and high school students within our school division. Coaches and athletes will be on hand to discuss the various sports programs and answer any questions that our students and families may have. So I encourage our families to come out. As students plan for summer, I want to encourage our families to take advantage of the many learning opportunities that are available to students. I'm sharing them tonight because we, we've sent out communication, but we want to make sure that we're continuing consistent communication around the summer programs to make sure everyone understands what's available to them, because there's a variety of programs to fit the needs of so many different students. So we're offering both summer school, our academic, which is our academic recovery program, and discovery, which is our enrichment program, and that's for students in kindergarten through grade 12. Registration for our summer programs in, it is in high demand and selection is limited to one enrichment program per student. Registration concludes May 24th for elementary, middle, and the discovery programs, and May 31st for high school. So please visit our website, www.pwcs.edu. Select Academics and Programs, then Summer Programs. As a reminder, our summer school-age childcare provider is Alpha Best Education, which provides two summer programs, Specialty Enrichment and Excursion. Students can balance the relaxation of summer with the excitement of discovery, and I would encourage families to take advantage of these programs that are offered by Alpha Best. PWCS is actively recruiting current vacancies for teachers, school counselors, and librarians. Filling our current vacancies with highly qualified candidates requires the support of the entire community, so help by spreading the word about available opportunities or registering for either of our upcoming in-person job fairs held May 18th, or we have a virtual job fair on Wednesday, June 12th. Registration can be found on our Human Resources webpage, so please refer your friends, family, and recent graduates to consider applying for a role in PWCS. Over the past two years, we have experienced many challenges with student transportation. We've listened to feedback, and we've continuously made improvements and updates to our processes and practices within student transportation. We've worked diligently to improve our service. Our goal is to increase our on-time arrivals and continuously improve our service to students, families, and staff. And although we did see improvements this year, there are still great opportunities for us to continue to get better. As a division, we contracted a third-party transportation consultant expert to conduct an independent study to review and evaluate the effectiveness and efficiency of our bus routes, because we knew that with all the revisions and updates that we made, we needed some additional support to get to the root causes of some of the problems that we were having with transportation. And so our third-party consultant did just that, and tonight, we will share the results from that independent study, and we will be engaging the community in the coming weeks about several improvements that we're planning to make to strengthen our customer service for the upcoming school year. I am inviting at this time to join us our Chief Operating Officer Vernon Bach and his team, and I'll have him introduce his team to present on the updates on transportation. And I'll just, before they get started, just basically state that now that we know some of the things that we could and should be doing better, it is going to be important for us to act swiftly and make these revisions. Change is always hard, but when we see that change is needed, it is going to be important for us to move forward with that process, and we'll do just that. So they'll be bringing forward to you some recommendations, but also ways in which we're going to engage our families and communities before we start rolling out or executing any changes. So, Mr. Bach, could you please introduce your full team?
Yes, thank you, Dr. McDade, and we have with us tonight, we've got Robin Marshall. Robin is our Director of Transportation, and we have with us tonight also Heather Hansch, our Supervisor of Transportation Operations. So, good evening, Chairman Latif, board members, and Dr. McDade. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We are excited to be with you tonight, to share with you some improvements we have on the horizon to really significantly improve our students' on-time arrival to school and to improve communication with our families. Before we begin our presentation, I just want to address some important issues regarding our transportation service delivery model. We acknowledge that there's been some significant challenges in delivering students to school on time and recruiting drivers, as well as maintaining effective communication with families. These shortcomings have not met our standards, and we recognize this is unacceptable. We've completed a top-to-bottom audit and analysis of our transportation operation through a partnership with the consultant firm, Formative, and we, we're here tonight to share with you the results of that audit and the improvements that will enable us to deliver the students on time and realize our transportation vision, which is really ensuring that our students get to school safely and on time with reliable and proper transportation service, and also empowering seamless student transportation experiences through timely parent communication for every journey. To realize that vision, we've been collaborating with Formative Technologies beginning this September to really optimize and modernize our district's transportation system. By leveraging Formative's expertise, we aim to implement effective strategies to improve punctuality and rebuild trust with our families. Formative is a student, is a student transportation technology management and consulting company with a highly analytical approach to systems improvement, and you can see the team's depth here in the school divisions, large school divisions, that they have supported across the country with making similar improvements, and also working to support Departments of Education and their work to support transportation. So we have engaged in a, a three-phase review with Formative. The first phase, and, and ultimately, really about this three phase, it was really to set a pathway within the district for us to achieve operational and fiscal sustainability and to produce recommendations for how to improve and how to optimize our transportation operations to ensure and, and to enhance on-time service performance. The first phase with Formative was completed back in January, and the objective of this stability sprint here was really to quickly assess our system, gather data pretty quickly, and to identify some pretty quick wins for us as a transportation department, and really the goal there was to begin to immediately stabilize. And so through that engagement, really, Formative engaged us in around three questions, and through their work and their data analysis, what opportunities can we realize to stabilize transportation pretty quickly? What are the near-term solutions, and also what are the longer-term solutions for next year and even into the future? We were really excited about this effort because it wasn't just a, an effort from afar. Formative came into the district, and they completed focus groups, and you can see the focus groups that we're engaged with here, from students to, to parents, parent liaisons in schools, and all the way up to senior leadership. These focus groups really were focused on teasing out our operations, gaining insight from the different layers within transportation and folks from across the district, and also a, a huge part of their first engagement effort here was validation of our data, validating it and then analyzing it. And so I'm excited because for the first time in several years, we now have accurate data to inform our improvement initiatives, and previously, our efforts were primarily based on intuition rather than empirical evidence. And this shift towards data-driven decision-making marks a significant step forward in our approach to continuous improvement. And so just want to share with you some of the numbers. We are transporting just under 73,000 students daily in the district. That's 79.4% of our population. And to give you some perspective, the average across the nation for a district, for districts nationwide is transporting about 49.4% of the student body, and in Virginia, it's about 75%. So giving you a little perspective, we're above both of those metrics, or averages, both nationally and at the state level. Metric number two is, is really, I, we believe, why we're in the current situation we're in. 57,000 students in our district walk less than 2/10 of a mile or less to their bus stop. It's, it's, it's far less than we have experienced in other districts, it's far less than our neighbors, and it's virtually providing door-to-door service for the vast majority of our students. And with the critical bus driver shortage that we've experienced, we've, we've been able to keep up, and that's been a, a key reason for our poor on-time performance. We're averaging about half of our buses, our, our seats on buses, which is another problem. We're relying heavily on privatized transportation, and we have pretty, in some cases, really very low-density trips. Many of our trips, you'll see in some data that we present in a few slides, over 1,000 trips a day with less than nine students on them, which is very inefficient. You can see here, our on-time performance in the morning is abysmal at 37, you know, in the morning, 37% of our buses are late to school, which is unacceptable to all of us. And, you know, I did mention already the data accuracy. We now have clean, accurate data to base and inform our decisions moving forward. The second phase was the comprehensive efficiency analysis that Formative conducted, really focusing on immediate solutions for both short-term and long-term problems. Again, you can see posing some of the same questions here. What are some things that we can do quickly to help us stabilize? What are some alternative system configurations that we could consider for transportation? And then what are our long-term solutions to really realize long-term stability? Robin?
Absolutely. Thanks, Vern. So some things that we can do immediately to help stabilize the system. First and foremost, I'll talk about stop consolidation. So Vern mentioned that over 50,000 of our students currently walk less than 1/10 of a mile to school. Raising that median up a little bit, allowing kids to walk maybe four or five houses further from point one to point two-five will allow us to get in and out of neighborhoods a lot quicker. Currently, right now, and we'll show you an example of that a little bit later, one neighborhood may have up to 10 or more stops. So we have buses stopping literally every other house, every three houses, just to pick our students up. Having less stops within specific neighborhoods will allow buses to get in and out of neighborhoods quicker, and it'll also shorten the number of, it'll shorten the number of, of stops on each route and allow us to pick up more students to get to school quicker. The opt-out policy is something that we want to put in place to allow families who do not use transportation to opt out, so we can have a more accurate number to plan for, for day one of school. So currently, right now, any student that is eligible for transportation within Prince William County, we have to route for. So day, so day one, we're routing for a lot more students than we actually have to transport. Doing so stretches our resources thin, especially in the beginning of the school year, and then we have to draw back and move buses around a lot in the beginning, and it's, it's a hectic time between September and the beginning of October. Currently, 71% of our plane riders actually do ride, and that just causes a, a heartache for the system, planning for more students than what we actually have to ride. And what Vern mentioned earlier, with half of our buses being full, this is a part of that reason. Another thing is a vehicle mix. Currently, right now, with our low-density routes, we have over 1,000 trips that have nine or less students on the bus or in our privatized vehicles. Adding vans, I'm sorry, adding district-owned vans to our mix next year will allow us to route low-density routes more efficiently and potentially eliminate 63 of those, of those low-density routes that we have on buses. It'll be not only cheaper to operate on vans, but another benefit is the vans can be a CDL pipeline for us, so not only will we add vans to the mix, but we'll use those vans to, to recruit drivers with regular driver's license who have aspirations to be bus drivers. We'll train those drivers in-house and create a pipeline to, to have more drivers than what we have positions. That is the actual goal. As we stand right now within transportation, we have more trainees ready to become bus drivers than, than we have positions. So that's a good problem to have and something that two years ago, we thought would have been unheard of with the driver shortage. On top of that, working with Formative, they found that by us expanding our training, improving our internal processes, and covering our routes better, we can get better GPS tracking, data accuracy. data accuracy, customer service, as well as communications to our schools and families. We were talking about doing a full technology overhaul before the beginning of the school year, but this is something that we're actually going to wait to do after the beginning of the school year stabilizing. So Vern and I, as well as Heather, noticed that we were trying to do a lot at once. So, besides trying to do everything at once before the school year starts, the goal is to have a prioritized step-by-step process to implement all of these changes that we want to see within transportation. So this is the example of a neighborhood that we currently route for. This neighborhood has 10 stops in it. 10 of them are designated for elementary students, nine are designated for middle-school students, and eight are designated for high school students. As you see, each stop is about six to seven houses apart. Some are only two to three houses apart. Working with Formative, they created a example of this neighborhood with the elementary stops. We reduced it from 10 stops all the way down to six. As you'll see, with the elementary students, the stops that were eliminated, you'll see that the students may have to walk anywhere from four to six houses further than what they have to walk currently for their stops. If you look at our middle-school example, we get slightly more aggressive because as the students get older, they're able to walk a little bit further on their own. We went from nine stops down to two. And for this particular neighborhood, we went from eight high school stops down to one. So this does not require the students to necessarily leave their neighborhood to get to their bus stop, but they have to walk slightly further within their neighborhood to get, to get to that stop.
And I just want to add here, it's important to note in the models that you just saw that the target distance for elementary would not exceed point two-five miles. The target distance for middle-school would be point five, and the target distance would be point seven, point seven-five for high school. Obviously, many students, because that would be the max, many students are walking much less than that. But those were the, kind of, the parameters that we worked with to establish these, the reductions in stops that you see here.
Absolutely. So, a part of phase two, we thought it was important to point out that out of our 62 elementary schools, 48 of them have defined walk boundaries. And this is important because these students currently walk to school now. So if you look at the student body from these schools, 30% of them are within the mile-walk distance. And out of that 30%, over 4,500 of them currently walk over a half a mile to get to school. So, we felt it was important to show this example because we're not asking families and students to do things that we're not already expecting our elementary students to do. Three of our schools, Cary Dale, Mullen, and Westgate, currently have 90% of their students as walkers, and about 12 schools have more than 50% of their student enrollment walking to school. This chart right here will show you what the median distance is now compared to what the median distance can be for next year. So if you look at the pre-K through five, they currently walk less than a tenth of a mile to their bus stop. And next year, we're proposing about point one-five. For our six to eight, the distance gets a little bit further as students get older. It goes from a tenth of, of a mile currently to point three-two. High school is point one-one to point five-three. If you look at the specific needs, these are, these are our students with disabilities as well as our McKinney-Vento students. Their stop distances will not change from this year to next. But our inboundery schools, these, these stops will increase for elementary about point zero-nine to point one-five. For middle-school, that's point one to point three-one. High school is 1.35 to point four, I'm sorry.
Four-nine.
Yeah. Yeah, to a point four-nine. Our specialty programs, via district policy, the stop can be up to five miles from, from the home. We are moving the elementary at the max from 1.18 to 2.77. Middle-school, 1.09 to three miles, and 1.35 to 3.48 for high school. Just to give you a quick highlight of our headlines of efficiency, what we covered is by repurposing 39 routed vehicles, we can have up to 225 fewer daily routes, which will allow more students on our current buses, which are currently averaging a little more than half full. We can reduce up to 22% of our stops. Now, just to keep in mind too, we're not just removing stops without actually doing a thorough review. Heather and her team will be going out to the stops that we're proposing to, to remove, looking at the walk distances, looking at whether there's sidewalks present or not, and just assessing the safety to see if the stops that are being proposed should actually be removed. The average duration of our runs will be about 53 minutes. With, and with a mixed utilization of vehicles, we can get up to 63 fewer trips that have nine students or less. And each vehicle will complete about 5.66 trips per day. And what that means is the goal is for each vehicle to do about three schools in the morning and three schools in the PM, getting up to close to six schools per day. And for all of our students, the median stop distances go from point one to point two-four. For our inboundery schools, it goes from 1.28 to 3.35. For our specialty programs and the specialized needs, routes will not change.
If, before, before Robin moves on, I think it's important to note, you know, the repurpose vehicles, there's, there's another important data point there. We average about 40 bus drivers out on any given day. When you have an employee group as large as 700, there are daily absences. And the nice thing about the repurposing of those routes and those vehicles is now we have built-in coverage, sub-coverage. And so, we can repurpose those into built-in sub-coverage and accommodate those routes when we have subs or when we need subs. All right, Vern. And so, the next, the final phase here, which is what we're working through, is building those bus stops and routes with these efficiencies. You know, you heard Robin say, we do have an internal team that will be reviewing all those routes, making sure that the routes are safe, they're safe routes to school. Obviously, we don't have kids crossing four lanes of traffic, so we'll be closely scrutinizing those. We are purchasing and implementing passenger vans, and we'll be bringing those into the fleet with those van drivers that Robin mentioned as the pipeline for drivers, bus drivers with CDLs. Working to communicate with families to expect adjustments to bus stops, and I'll talk a little bit about that more in a moment. Obviously, we believe all of these will improve customer satisfaction with faster response times to parents and increased satisfaction. We're working on building that opt-out platform for parents to indicate their preference for transportation and their needs for next year. And then, obviously, with all of these enhancements and improvements, the Here Comes the Bus app will be very functional next year, and we've been working very closely with the vendor to ensure that's the case. So just a couple, a couple things for engagement coming up and communication. Obviously, we're here presenting this publicly tonight. We, Robin and I will be hosting three virtual town hall meetings next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 7:00 to 8:15. Robin and I will be sending out a communication. We anticipate sending it out in the morning tomorrow, notifying all of our families of these, these changes and the potential positive impacts on transportation and improving arrival times. And in there, we will be including the links to the, the virtual town hall meetings. Obviously, you know, I mentioned the transportation preference, so that'll, that'll be something we envision. We've been working with IT there. So when students log into ParentView to access their grades, they'll have a pop-up screen that comes up and asking parents to express their, their desire for transportation. And we're just asking families, if we know, if you know you're not using transportation next year, to opt out. If you think you're going to need transportation at some point next year, just indicate, don't, don't do anything. You don't need to opt out, and Robin and the team will make sure they route for you. And then, the last, the last piece here is, we'll have student bus stops ready this fall, no later than August 12th. So that rounds out our presentation, and we're here, here to, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bach. And I really appreciate, and, and Robin is new, and he's been drinking from Fire Hydrant, but loving it from what I can see, and already making some significant improvements across the board with transportation. Heather, thank you so much for all of your hard work. You all are an incredible team behind the scenes. I know transportation takes the bulk of the beatings at the beginning of the year because in any school system, transportation is tough at the beginning of the school year. But you all have been so committed to taking feedback, continuously making improvements. And I really do appreciate everything that you, all of the thought that you've put into how we are going to roll out this phased approach for much-needed improvements in transportation, which I do believe will be positively received by our families. There will be growing pains in the process, but what outcomes will be from this, I think, will be definitely worth going through this. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the boards for any questions that you might have.
Dr. Latif.
Mr. Denny.
I just wanted to thank you guys. You know, I've talked to you a lot about this process, and constituents in my district have expressed their concerns with the buses. And I appreciate your transparency and you owning what, what's not going well right now and what you want to fix. And again, I think that I might be a little too obsessed with transportation now. I love it. I love the bus drivers. I love your community. And the vibe that you guys are creating over there is excellent. So, continue that. I appreciate your hard work. I think, I can't wait to hear less fuss from that Here Comes the Bus app. I'm really excited about that. I think the parents are going to be thrilled this year for those changes. And you know, I was supportive when you guys told us about this the first time. I think having those babies walk a little bit further is good for everybody. You know, zip the coats up, you know, put the tennis shoes on, walk to school, you'll be just fine. And I, I had no idea that the distance for specialty programs had to be that, that short of a driving distance, which I understand, my, my kids are involved in the specialty program, so I get, you know, wanting them to be close. And not everybody's as walkable, those kind of things. So I, so I understand. But consolidating the stops is going to make a huge difference in lateness, which I think is a, a big problem for a lot of parents. And the, the smaller vans, you know, I, of course, have talked to you about how vital those could be for the sports programs, smaller sports programs, for getting kids to regionals, getting kids to states when there's only one or two that qualify. I think the future of that is, is so bright. So I thank you guys each for all your hard work, and I can't wait to see what happens next year, and hopefully, I get invited to go ride another bus.
Thank you.
Anytime.
I think, Mr. Jesse.
Just a couple of questions. Number one, I'm assuming the new vans are already in our budget plan?
We, we, they are. Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other, the only, first of all, I think this is a very good plan, and I agree with everything that was just said. There are only one concern I have. That concern is, we talk about the walkers. We really talk about the walkers and the drop-offs. And the drop-offs are creating some major problems at our schools. And what I'm concerned about is that this is going to increase, some of the kids are going to be lazy, don't want to walk three houses up, and we're going to have more cars and stuff, and it's becoming a major problem. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse, I appreciate you sharing that. One thing that I'm, that we're really proud of is, is we have a traffic safety committee that we've implemented in the division. And they've engaged with 43 schools over the past year and a half to make improvements to their, their parent drop-off and their procedures, making it, you know, safety is the top priority, but making it efficient as possible as well. So the team's ready and on standby to help us this fall, and they'll continue to help us make improvements. And, you know, we're, we're going to monitor this very closely through the implementation the first month and even into the next year. So, it'll be something we're keeping a close eye on. So I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome again to our new Transportation Director, Mr. Marshall. I appreciate the look at a new lens with our, our Transportation Department. It's, transportation has needed some improvements and modifications over the years. Will this new plan, I, I understand how it's benefiting us as a student, it's reducing the time. What are the benefits for the drivers? Because what we consistently hear is the drivers don't have enough time to eat lunch, utilize the restroom, all of the things that are important to their quality of life while being employed. How does this impact them?
So, mainly with reducing the stops, the routes, the plan is for the routes to get shorter in regards to time, and, and it'll allow drivers to get in and out of neighborhoods quicker. So when they drop off at school, those routes can end quicker than, than what they do now. So, prime example, besides stopping at like 20 schools, I'm sorry, 20 stops, they may stop at about 15.
Okay. And, and we're still continuing to accommodate drivers with stops at schools using restrooms and things of that nature?
Absolutely.
That's always been a constant concern that we hear from our transportation employees?
That, that concern's been addressed, and, and yes, they have free access to go into the schools, use the restrooms, take breaks, those sort of things.
Okay. Thank you for that, because it, it comes up. And then, I did hear that you are going to personally be going out to look at the specific stops that are going to be eliminated. And I appreciate that because I saw on your presentation, things like Cary Dale and some of the schools where it's walkable, but those are also enclosed neighborhoods. And so, that does make a difference in the amount of students that are able to walk. I can, my student can walk from his home, but if you go right across the street, it's on an open road, and the bus does stop every two to three houses because there's no sidewalk, there's nowhere for the kids to go. So I appreciate you personally going out there. My concern is the specialty stops. I just want to make sure that while we're increasing the distance, that we are still able to accommodate our students to the best of our abilities. I know that there's no guarantee that you get a specialty bus when being in a specialty program, and parents are aware of that. But there are some parents that, or some families that are still dependent upon that. So I want to make sure that we're not removing a student's ability to participate in a specialty program because now the stop is extended further. I don't know, I've never seen any data on that. Just something I, I think is worth a look, especially in some of our denser neighborhoods where it, that mileage may not seem very far, but it, the family resources may not be there, and I don't hate to see a student not be able to participate. And then, my last question is, outside of the town halls, how are we prepping our school families for this adjustment that's coming? Will we be utilizing platforms like School Status and things of that nature? Because the town hall meetings are next week, and if you have a student, like I do, like I'm not thinking about signing up for a town hall, I'm thinking about how I'm going to get them through SOLs and getting ready for promotion ceremonies, which would start very soon. So how are we pushing this message out to our families?
Great, great, all great points. And the one thing I, I want to touch on before I touch on the, the communication piece is, you know, I'm really proud of this team because we are very responsive when we have those, you know, needs that, like you expressed. I think our team is very responsive, handles those on case-by-case basis. And the other thing with the addition of the vans, we're going to become much more flexible, more agile, to be able to adjust to some of those needs and those demands. So, we stand ready, you know, to work with families should they have a unique circumstance or we have situations like you mentioned. So, we, we're, we're ready to do that. The other thing I'll mention, you know, through the communication, we, we recognize it is a busy time of year for a lot of families. We wanted to get in front of this to, to notify families. We are working with Communications. We'll have a website. The virtual webinars will be recorded. They will be available on the website. We have a letter that's going out from Robin and myself to all families across the district with the changes tomorrow with links to those websites. And then, I envision, and we've talked about this with planning with our comms department, there'll be regular reminders too over the summer, and as we get closer to next year, just reminding families of the changes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And while it's not a transportation, sort of, ask, but it's sort of an inter-divisional ask, if we do have students drop, that we be proactive as a division, asking why. Because one of the things that I've noticed is that someone will drop or not participate regardless of what it is, because there's a lack of understanding. And then, if we don't know what that is, we're missing an opportunity. So, while it may not be transportation, I would just hope that someone else takes up that question for, so that we know what the issue is.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jen.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So, thank you very much for this presentation. I've had many conversations about transportation over the years. In full transparency, one of my interests in this topic is directly connected to start times. I have long detested high school starting at 7:20, and I don't even have a high school anymore. So, I know, you know, those of us who finally, finally say, you know, goodbye to that early start time, you know, we still... start time, you know, we still, we may not be actively, you know, parenting kids in Prince William County, but we remember how it was. Anyway, so I appreciate the stability sprint. That's awesome. This is a great effort. I appreciate the great effort to gather stakeholder input. I'm just going to give you a little bit of feedback, and then I have some questions. I really appreciate that we have gone in and gathered some accurate data, some empirical data. I have long observed mostly empty buses, driving all over Prince William County, all over my neighborhood, and thought, this is not efficient. Like, we can do, there are things we can do. We consolidate stops, we can make, we can get vans, we can, you know, figure out that there's a kid that's never going to take the bus. Like, why is this kid allocated a spot on this bus? You know, all of these things. So I'm really, I'm really excited about it. I think this is great. And I think it will improve our customer service. I think it will, I think more parents will trust the bus system and put their kids on the bus, hopefully, that will alleviate the long kiss-and-rides that we have. If, I'm hoping that will be the case. If the routes are shorter, you know, out where I am in Gainesville District, some neighborhoods are pretty clustered and close to schools, but some are really way out there, you know? And you don't ride the bus if your bus rides an hour long. Like, you just don't. You don't get on the bus at 6:05, drive all around Western Prince William, and finally get to your school at, you know, 6:50. Like, you just don't do that. So I'm really looking forward to seeing those routes getting shorter. I do imagine this is going to require significant communication with parents. I do believe that there will be parents who may not be happy about losing a door-to-door service, and they may not be happy when their stop is eliminated, or when they have to drive their high school student further to catch a bus, you know, for a specialty program. But I, the question was already asked and answered about anticipating our ride times to be shorter, and I'm really hoping, I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. I do have a couple of questions. Where do you anticipate parent discontent, I guess, or pushback? And what steps are we taking to anticipate where they might be unhappy? And how are we planning to get that information out to kind of preempt some of that uncertainty or discontent that might happen? Just because, you know, we don't like, humans don't really like change. And if you've always had your stop, you know, you always go to that corner, I anticipate we're going to have some issues.
I think you hit the nail on the head. That's where we are anticipating issues. You know, we've got, we've had some stop, longstanding stops. And, you know, when a stop gets eliminated, you know, there's going to be some complaints. We anticipate that, we know that. But the one thing I want to stress is, you know, we can't keep doing the same things and expecting different results. So we really do have to, you know, adjust some of these route distances to realize that on-time arrival for students. So we know it's going to be a change for some families. You know, we know it's going to be a little bit uncomfortable the first weeks of school when families are, you know, realizing some of those changes and, you know, seeing some of those changes. But it's to a greater good, and it's really, the focus here is to get kids to school on time and also increase the functionality of the communication with families. So that, you hit the nail on the head. That's where we expect to hear some complaints early on.
Yeah. And then I'm assuming our communications will try to anticipate that and address it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good. That's great to hear. And also, in our communications, are we going to be, or I recommend, or I suppose I can phrase this as a question or a comment, I recommend that we highlight to the families the benefits that we expect to gain from these changes.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that will help. I, if we have 63 fewer trips and 39 routed vehicles that will be repurposed, is this, how will this affect our start times for our high school, middle, and elementary? And also, our two-tiered elementary start times? I anticipate we will probably, we won't know until we start implementing it, what that's going to look like. I know in my district, everybody likes, likes the earlier elementary start time. They don't like the 9:20 start time. You know?
Sure.
I mean, some like it, some like it, you know? But I, anyway, is that something we're kind of hoping to eliminate?
No. We are not adjusting start times with this plan. Our start times will be consistent. I think what you can expect, though, and to Robin's point earlier, bus, time on buses and, you know, transport times will be reduced. So instead of maybe having a 6:05 pickup, you might have a 6:15 pickup. And so I think some of those early pickup times are going to be pushed back a little bit later because we're not, the bus runs aren't going to be as long and not as lengthy time on the bus for students. But that's not part of the plan of changing school start times for next year.
Okay. So, because I do recognize that this has been a much better year than last year. And with pairing of elementary schools together so that, you know, we gained efficiencies.
We did.
And so I do recognize that it's much better this year because of those things that we did. So you're saying that that will probably continue?
That will continue. I mean, it's something that we'll continually monitor. And the one thing we're going to monitor, obviously, the data is going to be closely monitored as we implement this. What we anticipate is a forward-facing dashboard and also an internal dashboard where we're monitoring the data real time. So that will be implemented this fall, and more to come on that. But that's the plan, to have that dashboard, a forward-facing dashboard for the community and also one for us internally.
Excellent. And the reason I am hopeful on my question is, when school, when elementary school starts at 9:20, those kids get home at 5:00. You know, it's a really long day for little kids. And when you have a long bus ride to get to high school, you know, you're tired, you're not able to pay attention. So I'm hoping eventually, I would like to see that we move high school a little more closer to 7:45, you know, or something like that. And maybe we don't have a 9:20 start time, we have like a 9:10 start time, or a 9:05, or, you know, something like that. Kind of bring in the wings a little bit, just because it, I think it is better for children. Okay. So I have two more questions. Never mind, I just asked that question. Will we have, on the website that you will be directing parents to, will there be frequently asked questions? And will there be like a number to call if they have like a really unique or specific situation that they want to make us aware of when we're planning?
I appreciate the question, because if I failed to mention the FAQs on the website. So yes, we are actually working actively to make sure those are completed and that parents can go right to the website with all those FAQs. And then, of course, we'll have a number publicized on the website, and we stand ready to answer any questions that parents have.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, I just want to say, I'm really glad we are doing this. I think it's been a longstanding problem. You know, the division has grown, and we kind of had the same system and added on to it as over the years, but I think this is great. I think it's the right time for an overhaul, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr.
Just really quick, I'm going to, I have some questions about some of Coles District. So if I could just get a meeting with somebody about that, that's, specifically, I want to find out about the Yates Ford area. Signal Hill Elementary School has a very wide attendance area, so they've had some interesting problems. And 28 always has really bad traffic. So I just want to find out some things from you. That's it. Thank you for everything, all the work you've done so far. I look forward to hearing a little bit more when you get your meetings done.
We're happy to answer any questions you have, so.
Mr. Blake, and then Mr. J.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Buck, and your team. I just, I'm really excited about that opt-out option, because I know a lot of, I know a lot of people in my, in my community, like, they'd like to drive their kids to school. So I think that's going to streamline things. And like you said, and also just like thinking outside the box and switching up the vehicle fleet, I also think is a great idea. So, and I agree with Ms. Wall that maybe we should highlight the benefits of, like, especially the walk, increasing the walking distance, and then the benefits of all the rest of the things. But overall, I'm very happy with this, because this has been a big issue, like the buses. I know the bus in my, in my neighborhood, it takes, I mean, the school is like five minutes away, but it takes the kids 40 minutes to get home off of that bus. So, you know, I appreciate this, and I know that a lot of parents will too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Mr. Jesse.
This is a quick question, and maybe start a, I'm concerned about the vans, because with our current color scheme, the vans are white, has a small, with today's environment where we have people kidnapping kids and doing other stuff, what color is our vans going to be?
So, most of the vans would be white, but they will be clearly marked as students onboard or student vehicles. They'll have bright reflective decals on them, so they can't be mistaken for a regular passenger van that's driven by a family. And it'll have, of course, Prince William logos on it all over. So it'll be very well-marked.
Thank you.
Excellent. Wonderful. Very good. I think with these efficiencies improved so much, we could have later start times, maybe in high school. I don't know. Maybe, maybe we're paving the way for that at some point. She's not happy. No, that's okay. We're moving on. Thank you so much. Outstanding. Dr. McDade, do you have anything to wrap up here with superintendent time?
No, that concludes superintendent time.
Okay. Outstanding. Moving on to, we don't have any board matters. We're moving on to revision, we don't have one. It's scratched off my list. Yeah, sorry, guys, we don't have one today. Revision of Policy 653, Materials Selection, Adoption, and Deletion of Policy 65303, Challenged Instructional Materials, First Reading.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chair Zargarpur, Dr. McDade, and members of the Board. I am not Dr. Sullivan. I am Ashley Cramp, the Director of Student Learning. And Dr. Sullivan is out of the division today, so I am presenting the recommendations on her behalf. We have two recommendations with regards to Policy 653, currently titled Materials Selection and Adoption. Namely, we want to add instructional in front of materials to clarify that those are the types of materials we're talking about in this policy. And we added clarity to update legal references, position titles, and some formatting. Policy 653 was also modified to include all of the content currently in Policy 653-03, Challenged Instructional Materials. That policy does require us to have regulations around challenges to materials. This change will result then in one cohesive policy that includes both of those elements. So we will have one parent policy, 653, with the regulations 653-1 and 653-2. Regulation 653-1 is the evaluation and selection of instructional materials. This regulation had minor changes in formatting, clarifying languages, clarifying language and updating references. Those changes have been posted. And Regulation 653-8 was changed in numbering to 653-2, and is now titled The Reconsideration of Instructional Materials. The changes to this regulation are in response to both parent and community and school feedback. And they are designed to provide a clear roadmap to requesting reconsideration of any of our materials and more consistency in how multiple petitions around materials are addressed. And those changes have also been posted.
Thank you very much. And so this is the first reading. For board members, please take a look at all this material. And for citizens, please send any questions or comments through by email. And we'll be voting on these policies at the next board meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. And then I assume council's looked at all this?
Yes.
Dr. Latif, we've looked at it, and I just did want to point out that the regulations
are posted on board docs.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on next to Revision of Policy 759, Concussion Management, First Reading. Odin Wolf?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the Board, and Dr. McDade. Tonight, we're here to present for first reading, revisions to Policy 759 on concussion management. I have here Dr. Martin Grimm, Director of Student Activities Management, and Ms. Ashley Osborne, Coordinator of Sports Medicine, to provide you with just some brief information regarding this policy and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So the Policy 759 basically is mostly a cleanup. We have updated language, like return to sport versus return to play, those types of things. Updated the legal reference. We've also identified a larger group or broader group of healthcare professionals that can diagnose and treat concussions, outside of the athletic trainer, which was named specifically in the policy. And then I think the next slide, please. Also, the, we have eliminated the level associates to report to the school board on an annual basis. The concussion policy review team does meet yearly, multiple times. Ms. Osborne leads those meetings. And if there are any changes that would be, come out of that committee report, we would go through the process that we're going through right now. So if we have a committee, if we have a meeting, and there is no changes made into the policy that just basically takes away redundancy. And also cleans up some language, like initially, the policy used brand names, so Xerox instead of Copy Machine is probably the best analysis there, or analogy there. So that's it in a nutshell.
You know, yeah, that's, let me just ask a quick question, and then we'll go to Mr. Denick. The, how do you define, and I don't see it in here, maybe it's in the other policy, appropriate healthcare provider?
So the appropriate healthcare provider is in the regulation as well. And I would actually, Ms. Osborne, go ahead and answer that question real quick.
The healthcare professionals are listed from multiple governing bodies. It would still along the lines of an athletic trainer, a doctor, a neuropathy, any of the lists. It does exclude ER doctors, because they don't have the follow-up care. So those doctors would typically refer. And then chiropractors, because that's not part of their practice. Physical therapists have been added to the list of people who can diagnose and treat concussions.
Can you send, can you send us that? That's not on here, right? That's somewhere else?
In the regulation, it says it, but happily, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Can you just send a copy of that to the board? I just, I want to see where that is and how, is that, is that based, is that definition based on VDOE or someone else is recommending that's who?
Yeah, it's actually in Virginia code. It's actually in Virginia.
Okay. Great. So if you just have that, that'd be great. Mr. Denick?
I honestly have not had a full chance to go through every little bit of this, but the one thing that stuck out to me as a mom of athletes, so I just have a question about, and you don't have to answer it today if you can give me some guidance on this, but changing from return to play to return to sport, I guess my concern with that is, if they have a concussion and they're out for six weeks, or whatever, three weeks, however long it is, if you say that appropriate return to sport, like, that to me says they can't even sit on the bench, they can't travel. Like, that's where the return to play versus return to sport, I get a little concerned there as a parent.
Sure. Then that's updated terminology with the National Athletic Training Association and CDC. However, I can tell Ms. Osborne has an answer for that question, so.
Sorry, I get very excited about this type of thing. So annually, there are multiple governing bodies and brilliant minds who get all together inside of these very fancy places, and they talk about it. So typically, what happens is they like to switch the language, like return to school goes return to learn, or return to sport goes to return to play. Truly, the only difference, and really it's a very strong difference, is that now we're able to take these student athletes and allow them to participate in non-contact or non-direct in-line-of-play where they can't get hit again. But we allow them to be out there, and they can run, and they can, and they can cheer, and they can participate in all the drills and the shooting. And so the changes that are coming are really positive. I like it because it has to do with mental health. Removing an athlete from play immediately causes a lot of issues. So all the sciences and all the big heads, is what I like to call them, have figured that out, that removing a student who is in love from what they love is creating some problems. And so now they're able to continue safely. We're not putting them back out there when things are being thrown in the air. However, they're off to the side doing goal-specific, sport-specific things, so they don't lose a step. If, since their team is doing full-contact things, they're able to do non-contact but go through the same footsteps, so they're able to maintain their skills. So it's, it's actually very exciting, so.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. As a mom of a child who's injured this year in football, his athletic trainer was facilitating that same thing due to mental health too, making sure that he was still able to be on the sidelines and things, but protected. So thank you for clarifying that, because that's great.
Very important.
I appreciate it.
The science is really changing, and it really is going more from being kind of[1799.45] The, the science is really changing, and it really is going more from being kind of away and isolated to getting you in and social as much as possible, so.
So, so a question on this then, then, for the physician who's clearing the concussion, what do they write on the form that clears them to play in the game full contact?
So that actually, um, is, it's still our athletic trainers that do the final clearance.
Oh, I see.
For it, so, uh, they'll, 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 they'll write a note that maybe says can return to physical activity. And then what the athletic trainers do is they will actually progress the student through, so you're not going from a dead stop to full participation. And they have to go through the drill process, and then they're, they're slowly put back into play by the athletic trainer.
How does the athletic trainer know? If the physician says, you know, no, they can't go back, does the athletic trainer make an independent decision on their own to say, no, the kid can go back?
No, sir. No, sir. It's typically, it's a collaboration. We try and work very closely with our physicians. If, for instance, a doctor says, no, they have a very, um, I guess blurred vision of how the student athlete is typically performing, and then there can be a discussion. A lot of times, if a kid is diagnosed, or if a child is diagnosed with a concussion, what will happen is, is that they'll be brought through a certain, um, return to sport progression, where they're able to do conditioning, do drill specific, and then when it's time for them to return for their checkups through the physician, that they have to report all of these things, and sometimes there's notes and packets sent, and then they're able to say, okay, well, you've gone through this, and you're looking, your symptoms are gone, or whatever they are. You've become asymptomatic, and they can be signed off. But if a child goes to a physician and is diagnosed by a doctor, they have to return to the doctor to be cleared. The athletic trainer does not have that ability. But the athletic trainer can diagnose, and treat, and return, um, a concussion, so that's why we like to.
So, just, just to point out, there's enormous pressure on physicians, you know, when these parents come in to say, I want my kid cleared, okay? My, my, you know, um, I know neurologists in the county. I know, you know, they, some come to me because they have eye issues after a concussion. And there's enormous pressure on us to clear the kid. Um, and, and so if you're telling me, well, we can do kind of a half clearance, where it's like, okay, yeah, he can sit on the bench or run and train, but no contact. I don't know if the physician community knows there's that difference between those two things, now that you're all going to do that. So then, now the parents are going to come in and say, well, can he do this? Can you clear him for half this? Or can you clear him for that? Like, it seems like this policy is much more difficult to manage.
So it, it really, I think, that, think about it like, you know, the way I think about it is, the physician, we're not going to override the physician saying that the athlete cannot play. Because that, clearly, we're not, we're not going to do that. But what we, what we are able to do after the physician says, well, we'll clear to play, and we'll have situations where we'll get a doctor's note, the, the student is cleared to play, we'll double-check with the physician, and they say, yeah, they came in with a broken finger. Not the concussion. So, because the note, the note will come. So what'll happen is, once, once, once the physician clears, there's still, and all of these are CDC, we're very, very fortunate in George Mason, and have the Virginia Concussion Initiative, Dr., uh, thank you, Dr. Caswell, um, on our committee that, that works with this. So it's, so what, what we're doing is, we're actually implementing what's done nationally and at the collegiate and the high school level. We're actually ahead of, I would say, ninety-five percent of the country on this.
I, I, you know, I mean, the, the only reason I bring this up, and I think we have to have clear, clear sort of guidance. I mean, because, you know, physician's liability is on the line, right? If he clears him to do this half thing you guys are doing, like, he's going to go run and all this stuff, and then something happens to him, right? I, I don't know, in, in, I mean, I guess current practice is, maybe they're already doing that, maybe they're saying, okay, you can go ahead and do training, but no contact. So maybe they're already doing that, I guess.
So they're, they're actually clearing, they're saying, they are actually clearing for the concussion.
Yeah.
We are actually the ones slowing it down. We're the ones saying, okay, you've been out for three weeks, we're going to get you your conditioning back.
Okay.
Then we're going to see you after full contact, we're going to, then we're going to, we're going to reassess you to make sure that you're not getting any, you know, residuals. So, for the physician, they're saying, yes, neurologically, what we're seeing, we can move forward, and then we're actually the ones slowing it down. And we do get a little pushback from that, from, from some parents, because it's like, well, the doctor said they can go.
Yeah.
And our response is, the doctor, from a neurological standpoint, is saying they can go.
Okay.
But they're not seeing it from the on-the-field play type situation.
Fascinating, okay. Yeah, Mr.?
I want, Dr. Latif, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, the, the change that's on the screen is not reflected in the red line that's on the, um, agenda item. In the policy, the last sentence should be stricken through. I'm not sure why it's not on here. But essentially, that was my suggestion, that, that the results of the review that occurs annually is really their presentation to you, not, as it says now, the results of this review should be reported to the school board via the Associate Superintendent for High Schools. But it doesn't, it's not, there is really no mechanism for that to come to you from an associate superintendent. Instead, what it, what actually happens is they bring in any changes on an annual basis for regulation change. The other thing I wanted to point out was, you had asked what, um, an appropriate healthcare provider is, and that is identified in the regulation, seven fifty-nine dash one, which is posted on board docs, and that would be a licensed healthcare provider is a physician, physician assistant, osteopath, or certified athletic trainer, licensed by the Virginia Board of Medicine, a neuropsychologist licensed by the Board of Psychology, or a nurse practitioner licensed by the Virginia State Board of Nursing.
In compliance with the code.
Correct.
So our regulations in compliance with Virginia State Code on all that?
I certainly hope so, since my office reviewed it.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, Ms. Wall?
I had one question. Um, in what will be new section D, um, I, I think it's the stricken D, and then stricken in the new D. Is the, um, identifying training and certification requirements for athletic trainers, and then lower at a, not so much the CDC language, but the providing for training of physical education teacher and other sponsor leaders of activities where students at risk of head injury, are, what are we doing with that? Are we, what, what, can you explain to me, are we not training people anymore?
No, it's, it's actually the opposite, so, yeah, I think what happened probably when the policy first came out, it was directed at that. At this point, we're training all teachers and all coaches. So instead of specific saying, uh, physical education teachers, it's really all teachers, um, we've, we've revamped, um, the, the, working with the NOVA. We've completely revamped it, and so it's all teachers get it. And so, it's just, it's, again, it's a redundancy thing. We're, 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 we're training teachers, so we don't need to say we're going to train physical education teachers, if that makes sense.
Yes, that makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Wall, I'll point out that there's a training and education section in the regulation as well that identifies all the training protocols.
Wait, can you just send an email just telling us all the regulations pertaining to this policy, so we can review? Great. Okay, outstanding, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so again, so board members, please take, review this. This will also be up for a vote next time, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
This is our first reading. Okay, outstanding. All right, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, ladies. We appreciate it. Um, thank you, Dr. McDade. We move on to board matters. Um, tonight, we'll start with, um, Mr. Blake. You get to go first, buddy. I won't correct any wording in yours.
You can, if you want.
Just messing around.
You can correct me if you want to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. It's always an, an honor to be here representing the Neapsco District. And tonight, I wish to speak about some significant achievements and ongoing initiatives within our schools. Recently, our district celebrated remarkable events that I want to highlight. The first Lego League Day at Osborne Park, uh, I got to go to, was a showcase of ingenuity and problem-solving skills for our students. This event not only demonstrated their technical abilities, but also their creativity and teamwork. I also attempted, or I also attended Hampton Middle School hosted a mental health fair with, with an international day combined. These events underline our commitment to embracing cultural diversity and enhancing mental wellness across our schools. As we observe Mental Health Awareness Month this May, it is crucial to emphasize the importance of mental health in our educational environment and the community at large. With my background in psychology, I am keenly aware of the critical role that mental health plays in the success and overall well-being of our students and staff. My professional journey in psychology and my work within the community have deepened my commitment to mental wellness. I'm dedicated to ensuring that our schools are equipped with the necessary resources to effectively, effectively support the mental health of all of our students. One of the most significant challenges we face is the stigma associated with mental health. It is vital to differentiate between mental health and mental illness. While mental health encompasses our mo, our emotional, physiological, and social well-being, mental illness refers to health conditions that involve changes in emotions, thinking, or behavior. These illnesses can cause distress and hinder functioning in social, work, or family activities. To de-stigmatize mental health issues, we, we must create an environment where mental health is, as openly discussed and treated, with the same urgency and care as physical health. This involves educating our students, staff, and community to dispel myths and encourage those in need to seek help without fear of judgment. In closing, I want to express my deep appreciation for the opportunity to serve my community. Together, let's continue to build a supportive environment where every member of our school district can thrive, both educationally and personally. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm almost certain I'm going to run over time, because this will be my last school board meeting of this year. Um, I will be attending my son's promotion ceremony, which is scheduled during a school board meeting. So I would, just as, um, a, a parent, but also as a board member, we used to have a practice of not doing that. I, clearly, it's just an issue this year, but the reason why I bring that up is because the majority of our elementary and middle school promotion ceremonies are all scheduled on the same night. Some of them also at the same time as high school graduations, which, and my time as a board member has never happened before. I bring this to the attention of the public, because the public doesn't know why we're not there. They don't know that, like, we can't be in three places at one time, and a lot of us, especially this being election year, have formed a really, um, significant bond with our communities. And I think it's important that I take a moment to honor the fact that all of us cannot be at all of these events. I really, really hope that our division can spread those out, not only just as my own personal plea, but if I had a child in elementary and middle and high school, I may have to skip one of my child's events this year to go to another one. That should never happen. And every year that I've been on the board, I can't stand back-to-school night, and I cannot stand graduation season, and this year is the worst. And I know that it is not like the superintendent or anybody, the Kelly Building, making these scheduling choices. I also want to formally recognize that it is the, the event centers that put a lot of pressure on our school division, because they don't make money for us booking graduations, but we spend a significant amount of money, like thirty, close to thirty grand, on per graduation, and don't quote me on the number, but it's really expensive. And this year, we're also having graduations Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays. So if you are in a family that does not have the ability to take off work, you won't be going. If you're coming from out of town, you are going to significantly incur expenses in order to attend a graduation, which used to occur Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And since we are forty percent free and reduced lunch, I feel the need to speak up for my community. I know the impact it would have on my family if I had to go to graduation on a Wednesday. I know exactly what it felt like to have a graduation on a Monday in my family years ago. So, I know that this is not solely our schools scheduling this, it has to do with where we have them. But again, this is a significant burden on our families, and I hope that as a division, we can really at least, um, explain why to our families, or do better next year. And taking into account, of course, we don't have any control over Eagle Bank, but that's my shameless plug, to build a sports and entertainment center, to keep the money in-house, and to have graduations right here in the county, and significantly reduce the financial burden to our families. And then I'm just going to wrap up and say, I went to a lot of similar events. Congratulations to Denise Carroll, First Lego League. First time we had over a hundred and nineteen teams there. We may need to think about breaking it up into two events. Governor's School Research Symposium, wonderful as always, and I just want to say congratulations to all those who are being promoted from elementary school, middle school, high school, juvenile detention center graduations, um, independent, non-traditional graduation, Pace West, all of those. It's an important time in all of our families, uh, for all of our families. I want to say congratulations to all those who will be participating in Signing Day as well, um, as CTE. And so, um, thank you, and to, uh, our new board members for bringing out the year successfully. I appreciate the opportunity to work with each and every one of you, and I want to say thank you to the staff for all of your hard work. I know that this is a very hard time of year, and especially to our teachers, our counselors, and our principals, and all of the parent volunteers for our schools. So thank you very much, and I hope everyone is, um, enrolled in some type of summer programming, because it's academic remediation, and for fun learning. So, thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you. So, uh, Fernando's not here, but I think a code of behavior video contest, or like a TikTok contest, could be very fun. That's true. It might be banned. Um, I also, um, need, think I need to work with communication team on my good angles also, like Dr. Latif said. Looking backward, um, some of the great events, um, that I've been able to attend. On the eighteenth of April, I was able to go to the multicultural night at Tyler. It was awesome. Nineteenth of April, I went to the Military Families Parade, also at Tyler. Twenty-fourth was the Spark Business Partnership Awards, and we love our community partners, and I'm really excited to see this grow. May ninth was the Internal Audit Committee meeting. We had a great meeting. Um, we have a great internal audit plan, and we have, are bringing, um, value to the organization. Uh, May tenth was Mountain View's Young Heroes Breakfast. It was an awesome event, so well-planned, families loved it. Also on the tenth, I attended Battlefield High School Spring Concert. The theme was Broadway, and that was Mr. Bernie's final concert. And he is a beloved teacher in the, um, in the community, and I know he's moving on to other professional opportunities, so I just wanted to say thank you for all his many years of service to Battlefield community. Fourteenth was our Joint Audit Committee meeting with the B O C S, my first one. And the, I, I also attended Battlefield Department Awards and the Cassett Awards, and wow, we have some amazing children, students, young adults. Um, and tonight, before I came here, I went to the Senior Awards and Scholarships at Battlefield High School, and they have to date, um, brought in thirteen million, um, dollars in scholarship, and that, and scholarships are still coming in, so that's really great. I want to highlight that May is Internal Audit Awareness Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I join Governor Yonkin in calling this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, and particularly to our school division. Auditor is often very behind the scenes as, as appropriate, but, um, our auditor performs a vital function of strengthening our organization and protecting stakeholders by helping identify and manage Prince William County Public Schools' risks, and ensures that our policies, procedures, and controls are working and in place, um, working appropriately and in place. So I want to take this opportunity to express appreciation for our Chief Internal Auditor and our soon-to-be hired Audit Manager. Um, in my remaining time, as this school year draws to an end, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to each of you for your commitment to your children and their academic and personal success. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to join with you in celebrating the milestones your students have achieved, and the lessons learned, and the memories created in this coming rest of this month. I'm incredibly proud of our students and for how hard they work. I'm incredibly proud of our teachers for their creative, creativity and adaptability. Thank you for entrusting me to represent you in the Gainesville District, and as I advocate for your children's education. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your school board member this year, wishing you all a safe and relaxing and enjoyable summer.
Mr. Jesse?
Thank you. Uh, since the last board meeting, I, uh, attended the Rockledge Elementary School, had a heritage tonight. It was a outside event, very well-attended. I went to Woodbridge High School, had a spring dance concert, and again, that was a very good program. And then this afternoon, just before coming here, I went over to Jenkins Elementary School, and they had a leadership and me, uh, presentation that focused on, uh, the finances, and they had sixty students, third, fourth, and fifth grade students that participated in the program, and they gave out awards. Each, uh, student that opened a savings account with the Apple Credit, Credit Union, uh, gets that fifty dollars starter bonus to, uh, start their saving program, so, and then the, uh, sorority, not a sorority, but the, uh, one hundred Black Women Organization also gave out, uh, awards, uh, dollars, uh, for people starting the program, so that was a very, uh, good program. So that's what I did, and look forward to, uh, starting the graduation. I agree with, uh, that, uh, that a lot of these are very confusing and compressed and conflict with each other. So I will attend as many as I can. Thank you very much.
Ms. Tridenna.
Thank you. I think scheduling our county and events is a nightmare for some people to do. And I'm, sitting here tonight, I missed my son's chorus concert. I have three kids. They're gonna be in three different places, at different events. We can't, we can't cater to us. And we, as elected officials, chose to be here. You can also choose to miss to go to your kids' events. Although, sorry, honey, I'm not coming to your chorus concert tonight. I'm gonna sit here and take some votes. So, sorry I missed your chorus concert, but it's gonna happen and we can't schedule around our personal schedules as school board members. Parents in our districts continue to miss events for their kids because they can't be in three places at once. It's just a fact of the matter. As the proud daughter of a dedicated police officer now retired, I wanted to take a moment to highlight today the significance of Peace Officers Memorial Day. Each year, Police Week is a time to pay tribute to the men and women who serve and protect our communities. It's an opportunity for us to recognize their sacrifices, honor their commitment to public safety, and express our gratitude for their selfless and unwavering dedication to service. Peace Officers Memorial Day observed on May fifteenth holds a special place in my heart as we remember and honor those courageous officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. It's a solemn day of remembrance and reflection, reminding us of the risks law enforcement officers face every day to keep us safe. I would like to pay tribute to our fallen officers in Prince William County, Pete White, Mike Pennington, Chris Young, and Ashley Gwenden. We have named a police station after Mr. White and a school after Mr. Young and Mr. Pennington. And I hope one day we will honor Ms. Gwenden by naming a school after her. I'd like to take a moment and thank my favorite cop, my dad. Thank you for being a steadfast, strong example of a life of public service and sacrifice, for putting the safety of Prince William County and its citizens before yourself. I love you, Dad, and I'm thankful to have been part of the Prince William County Police Family. I will forever back the blue. I also wanted to address a couple other statements that were made about parents and, you know, the hearsay and the things that are happening. Parents, I appreciate you continuing to speak up and advocate for your children. I appreciate you telling the stories. I appreciate you writing emails and talking about what you're seeing and what you're experiencing and what your kids are experiencing. I am listening. I hear you. And I will continue to try to advocate and make positive changes for you and your family in Prince William County. Thank you. And I'm also very excited to attend graduations in the next few weeks as these are my firsts. I'm so proud of our seniors and their amazing accomplishments. Enjoy the last and be excited for so many upcoming firsts. Congratulations, class of twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Wilk.
Good evening. Oh, Jill, thank you for being here. Seems a full house tonight. Just, I put, I posted my updates now on my board thing, but I'll just mention a couple of the ones most recently. Particularly, you know, A Street Bruins is a great program promoting inclusion with the special ed and general education population. And they had their annual prom on Saturday, and it was a good time. I, I asked Ashley if the DJ could play eighties music, and we had four songs in a row, and I actually danced this year. I said, I didn't care, whatever, at this point. A couple multicultural nights wrapped up there. Family Science Night, Mary Williams last night, Forest Park High School, I think just in general, boys or girls, the boys won district lacrosse championships. I was there last night and my son, I let him hand out the trophy. So anyways, what a joyous evening. Thank you all so much. Vern, I was in, I had to run out. Something came up with something that was said on the diet, so I had to cough. And I just wanna appreciate what you said. I, I love the fact, you know, I understand, you know, people say, oh, we're becoming too corporate, stuff like that. Well, the reality is, we service our community. We put out our product as a student, ready to, you know, be a profile of a graduate, succeed in this world, whatever road they wanna go on. So the entire time, I'm thinking kinda like, oh, your whole thing was like supply chain management about like how we're getting the kids to school and how we're doing this and stuff. It was really cool. I thought it was very professional and very nice. So, thank you for that. And I'll yield an extra minute to Lori. I'm just kidding, she's gone. But I'm done. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I went to the robotics Lego League thing on May the fourth, and I came home and didn't realize that the kids had clothes pinned me. So for those of you who did go to the robotics things, you know what that means. So I got four clothes pins. I believe one was from Coles Elementary. That was kinda cool. Felt like one of the, one of the people, like, have been, been accepted now. Also had an opportunity to go to the Virginia Association of Second, oh, I'm sorry, Virginia School Board Association Regional Meeting that we had. We got to hear from Dr. Lisa Kuntz, who's the Virginia Superintendent for Instruction. So she talked a little bit about the, the reading program that's coming, that's becoming law in the state, and some things surrounding that. She talked a little bit about attendance. I also attended the Governor's School Research Symposium, and the students that I, that I got to learn from were absolutely amazing, juniors and seniors. And they did projects that were, and I asked them, why did they pick their projects? And they had different reasons, but it was just, it was so neat to see how engaged they were and the level of research and knowledge that they gained from this. I also wanna mention that Osborne Park High School Principal, Lisa Marie Kane, is the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals, twenty twenty-four Outstanding High School Principal of Virginia. On our website, there is a, a line here that says, Kane is passionate about minimizing barriers to instruction through collaborative learning teams, teacher efficacy, and her conviction that no child is at risk, but rather all are at promise. So what I know about her, I know that's true. Congratulations to her. She was also Prince William Principal of the Year last year. And speaking of principals, those of us in the teacher circle may have seen, I certainly get sent this, you know, people send me this and say, how do you like this guy? There's a principal who does these, I don't know if they're TikToks or what, but I think his name is Principal Bird, and he talks about how to support teachers. And we were having this discussion about the code of behavior. It's, it's evident that we need to make sure that our teachers are able to do their job in the classroom. It's not gonna happen without support. So when a teacher has a concern, they raise a concern, we really need to listen. And this is why I said earlier that parents, when you have concerns, make sure you document very, very, very succinctly what you're worried about, so we can all work together. But we don't wanna pile on teachers either. We need to make sure that they're supported. So for those of you who know about this principal, and you've seen some of his videos, I love his advice, so I'm gonna just reiterate it. Support your teachers. Thank you all. Have a good night. Look forward to the graduations that are coming.
Okay, thank you. Busy meeting tonight, a lot of stuff to talk about. I wanna thank both Denise Hebner's office, her outfit, Vern Box. I think the theme of both presentations today were that you did engage parents and you did engage the community. And, and I think that was critical in the work that you did to sort of come to a final product that I think is really something we're happy to move forward with. I appreciate Dr. McDade that, you know, it is important to let everyone know that, you know, a lot of these changes are directed by the communications we get and the comments we get from families and, and folks over the years. And so I think that's really important. The driver, we didn't, you know, part of it is, yes, transportation's an issue, but, you know, it becomes more of an issue if we get complaints. And a lot of the work we're doing is to try to make things better. And so it is really important that everyone understands that, you know, a lot of the work we do is driven by our community, our stakeholders, our parents, our students, our families. And, and I don't think anything should be lost on that. You know, we, we had a long meeting, we had a lot of discussions, but the largest driver in the work we do here is families, parents, and students. Whether it's trying to improve our academic success, which we heard about at the last board meeting, or whether it's, you know, commitment to, you know, transportation's a massive system we have to move, or whether it's working on the code of behavior, which is obviously impactful every day of the year. Those are things that we just take seriously, the comments everyone brings to the table. Whether it's at citizen comment time, whether it's by email, whether it's through the school, whether it's through, you know, you know, concerns brought up at different advisory committees, all of these things, I truly appreciate. And I think it's something that I wanna thank. Everyone in our schools this year, we're wrapping up the school year, our teachers, our counselors, our principals, our assistant principals, our staff, our custodians, everyone who makes the school work, and then everyone in this building behind the scenes who makes everything happen. It was a terrific year. I think we'll finish strong in the fourth quarter. Our absenteeism has improved. I think that's continuing to improve. Our grades are continuing to improve. We're seeing improvements across the board. And I look for big things, and I congratulate all of our seniors because I think they will have graduated by the time we make our next meeting. So congratulations to every senior who will graduate this year and, and best wishes on going out there and doing whatever you do to make yourself have a thriving future and for yourself and your community. Thank you very much. This time, the board meeting is adjourned.